Good evening, test. If you would allow, let me welcome everybody tonight to a regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission, September 19th, 2023, in the Veterans Memorial Building. We have roughly about 10 folks in the audience and others participating on the Zoom and the channel. Welcome, everyone, and I'd like to introduce the commission. My name is William Roshan. I'm the chair this evening. My vice chair, Mike Rodriguez, Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, Commissioner Asia King, and Commissioner Eric Meyer. We're very happy to be here and thank you all for coming. I've established a quorum, and so I'll call the meeting to order. And if we could begin with a moment of silence? Thank you, and if we could do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, written, and just as.
Thanks, everyone. Planning Commission announcements, commissioners, do we hear anything?
Yeah, I just want to make one announcement only.
Uh, Mike, please.
So, just for the planning commissioners benefit, we dealt with the objective design standards, and a week after that, a professor from UCLA who runs the planning department felt that, you know, the people in Sacramento were making all the problems from the locals. So I just thought I'd share that with you, so I wasn't the only one that felt squeamish about that. So it just backed me up. I just wish I had that information when we were dealing with it. So a professor stated that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Others? Hearing none, let me go. If I could invite public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone in the audience or on the Zoom call to speak to any item city-related that's not on the agenda. And if you do have to leave, we will entertain your comments on agenda items as well. Welcome.
Thank you, Planning Commission. My name is Sean Green. I wanted to make two comments for the commission and staff and the residents of Morro Bay. First off, I wanted to let everyone know who's out in the audience that there is currently a bid posting, an RFP, that is open on the waterfront, a very important lease site, lease sites 49, 50, and 51, also known as 431 and 451 in Barcadero, the southernmost waterfront lease sites nearest Tidlins Park. That RFP remains open for another three and a half weeks. It closes on October 12th. So any interested developers, builders, contractors, entrepreneurs, people who work in marine-associated businesses are encouraged to apply. The more people and interest we have in the site, the better projects will likely come forward. Some of the things that council has asked for and the harbor director has asked for in a successful proposal, best and highest use of both land and water portions of the site, improved view shed and facade, adds to the overall tourism draw, restore and enhance the environment where applicable, incorporation of independent public restroom onsite if practical, include safety enhancements in the area where applicable, conforming to cities' city plans, minimum eight-foot sidewalks and 10-foot wide lateral public access along the waterfront, architectural and perhaps functional emphasis on fishing village, marine heritage, working waterfront, national estuary themes, certainly ADA compliance, and lastly, incorporation of sustainability or LEED characteristics.
Great.
The other comments I wanted to make pertains to city staff who I want to, across the board, thank for your hard work. Our city departments, mainly our public safety departments, police, fire, and harbor often find themselves in a situation where the general public might offer them a thanks every once in a while, and community development is not as public-facing, and yet they're working just as hard. And I know I can do a better job of thanking everyone from, all the way from Scott up top to our senior planners, to our contract planners, to our assistant and associate planners, all the way down to our interns who are working the counter. Not everyone's a happy camper when they go into those counter office hours, and I've seen everyone handle it really well every time I go in there. So thank you across the board.
Very nice. Nice to see you, Sean.
And just to follow up, that's Reg Wibley's old property, and it's the Associated Pacific Building, as well as the two little houses. Pretty cool property.
Interesting. Scott, could you put a timer on for the speakers?
It was on.
I don't see it.
He definitely wanted on for me, and it's.
Well, just for you, yeah.
No, I mean, I had it going, and it's ready to go as soon as he starts talking.
It's on, but it's backwards.
Oh, it's upside down.
Yeah, it's upside down. That's the problem. It's on, but it's upside down.
He couldn't. I'll stand on my head if necessary. It's reading fine for me.
It was just upside down.
Oh, there we go.
All right. Significant improvements, I like.
Mr. Fix-It, thank you. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Terry Simons.
Welcome.
Not that that would come as a surprise to you on the commission, since I'm here regularly. Item's not on the agenda. It's not something that I normally find that I'm compelled to speak to, and had it not been for this card that I received in my mailbox over the weekend, I wouldn't be here talking about this item. There is a small 19-inch diameter tree on Quintana that has met the preliminary requirements to be cut down. Now, that sounds a bit inverse to me. You would think that we would have a public policy that would set a benchmark to preserve a tree rather than attract to cut it down. This tree is currently, according to this notice, and I've had several discussions with staff, unless I appeal it or somebody else appeals it, scheduled to be cut down. It shouldn't be. I took numerous photographs of Morro Bay Boulevard. This tree happens to be, and I won't try to read the formal botanical name, but it's commonly called the New Zealand Christmas Tree. For those of you that that doesn't ring a bell with, both sides of Morro Bay Boulevard, from top to bottom and multiple places around the community, are full of these beautiful specimen trees. As we had a speaker here during our historic review period, perhaps totally inappropriate for the community, perhaps dirty, perhaps destructive to sidewalks and curbs and gutters. However, this community has invested 60-plus years, and God only knows how much time and effort in care and maintaining these trees, and they are a significant part of the downtown. So why do I care? This tree is way out on Quintana. I wouldn't even have thought about talking about this tonight, except I misread the card, and I thought it was a different species of tree, which I didn't recognize as being part of. I live in the neighborhood, so I didn't recognize this being part of my normal drive home. It turns out I was wrong, and when I went and looked at it, I suddenly realized the tree we're talking about. I've been in deep discussions with staff, and this afternoon Greg Qualick from Public Works, who I think would have come tonight, except he's on his way to Sacramento, discussing about the protocols for tree removal. And at the end of this evening's meeting, when you discuss your future agenda items, I would really love to either discuss further with you or have you add to a future agenda item, a comprehensive review of tree removal, which also happens to be in the zoning review that you're doing tonight. Thank you.
Terry, thank you very much, and I can actually vouch for him. I saw him at City Hall, like, for 20 minutes talking to staff about the tree. I'm supportive, and I'd be happy to agendize that, for us to get an input, Scott, for the commission. This is something that, two years ago, we actually did, we brought in arborists, you'll remember, and we did an information session. We are officially a tree city.
We are.
And so I think for us to be aware of that process would be healthy.
Yeah, we could outline the process for you, not a problem.
Thanks. Others who would like to speak? Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Bill Martini. Betty? Okay. Yeah, just a quick comment. I won't, I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to stay later on for the zoning, you know, I know it's updated and all that. And just wanted to ask a quick question. I know the downtown area, there's been a lot of contention between the 30-foot height limit going up to 37, possibly going up to 40. And I started reading the latest update. I didn't quite get there, but my question is, now, is the downtown, the height limit going up to 37 and possibly 40 feet with this new zoning? And if so, that, again, would allow three-to-four-story structures in the downtown area. And is there, if that is happening, is there any last-minute way of kind of pulling that size down? Because, I mean, that's huge, and it will start looking like areas of San Luis Obispo. So my main concern is the downtown area, and if there's any way of reducing that 40-foot-plus, you know, height limit that's allowed in the update. Thank you.
Yeah. Let me offer a quick address if you have to leave. What the plan, my plan as chair, is that we're going to talk about that item.
Okay.
Part of our discussion. And you know that over a year ago, this planning commission recommended not to raise the height to 37 feet.
Right.
So I think we want to revisit that with this line of commissioners.
Oh, I'll hang in then. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you. Others? Betty, welcome.
Betty Winholz, I just want to remind the public, those on the Zoom or behind me or maybe even you, if you haven't received your no ballot for the garbage rate increase, I have those. We've been going door-to-door around town to houses and businesses. We, being Cal, the Citizens for Affordable Living, have sponsored this ballot. We feel that what the garbage company is asking for, which is around, if you include the 15% they added on to us just a year ago, and now they're asking for, I think it's another 38%, so that's like over 50% within one year. And part of that is retro. They didn't get their paperwork in March, and so they want us to go back and pay for, and bring it up to date to where they want it. And I think that's pretty unfair to do a retro fee. So if we can get that 50-plus 1% to the City Hall, to the Dana Swanson, who's the city clerk, by October 10th, there'll be a hearing that night at the city council meeting, and if we're lucky, then we can make sure that increase doesn't happen, and maybe the garbage company would come to the table and we could lower that percentage. So if anyone needs forms or has questions, they're more than welcome to ask me or other Cal members.
Thank you, Betty.
Can I ask clarification?
Please, go ahead, Mike.
Because you're so knowledgeable, Betty. Who regulates or who reviews those rates for approval, you know, other than the community? That's what you're asking.
I think it's Ms. Burlingame, is it not, that is in charge of our contracts with the garbage company? And I know that they did go out to peer review because they had actually asked for something like a 30% increase, and they reduced it to 22%, but then they added on the retro to make up, I think, for what they were missing. So, and it's very interesting, I don't know if I can add this, but someone on Nextdoor went and looked at the website for waste management and looked at their stockholders' review, and they made, it's either millions or billions last year, and they promised Nextdoor that they would give them another 10% increase on their stocks. So that tells me this maybe isn't about us, but it might be about them.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because, you know, whenever PG&E asks for a rate increase, the PUC has to approve that. So usually there's a body that reviews and approves that. It's not as simple as that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Others who would like to speak during public comment? Ray and Chris, let me welcome you guys tonight. Ray and Chris are behind the scenes doing our Zoom call. Ray, do we have anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Roshan. There are currently no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, last chance to speak. Thank you all for being here. Consent calendar. Commissioners, I don't think there's a need to vote on this, Scott?
It's a receiving file.
Okay. Let's move right on to our public hearing. I'd like to introduce case B1, case number CDP 22-039 slash CUP 22-10. Site location is 1050 Morro Avenue, and I'd like to welcome Nancy. Nancy, you're still here.
I'm still here.
Okay.
This is an expansion of an existing 16-room hotel. It's got a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit, and the hotel is Beach The project location and zoning, this map shows the project about in the middle, and three different zoning districts are surrounding it. It's in CVS zoning district, that's the current effective zoning, not the proposed new zoning, which allows hotels, but has larger street frontage setbacks and higher parking requirements than the pending proposed new zoning code, which is community commercial. Project history, the existing hotel was built in 1946. The parcel is approximately a half acre. The existing hotel is a single-story with 16 hotel rooms in a U-shaped configuration around a central parking area with 14 parking spaces. The architectural historic report concludes that the building does not meet the conditions that would require preservation. Here's a view of the existing project looking north from the intersection of Dune and Morro Avenue, and there's, I think it's a five- or six-unit apartment building in the front on the right side of the photo. This is a view looking southeast from the intersection of Beach Street and Morro Ave. And of note is the elevation of the site and the existing sidewalks on Beach. Proposed remodel and expansion, this is an image of the ground floor. It has 16 existing hotel rooms in the light blue. It has new staff or community space being added in areas that were previously parking in the orange, and there are two existing rooms that are office and storage area in yellow.
So Nancy, this is the new plan?
This is the existing and new, yes.
Okay. Do we have just an existing during your report?
If you look at only the blue.
Okay.
And the yellow, sorry. Blue and the yellow, not the orange. So basically, they're adding spaces where there was parking in the orange.
Yeah, so the orange.
Everything else is existing.
So, yeah, the orange on the right-hand side is where parking was, and they're adding interior space with that.
Got it.
Enclosing it, yeah.
They're also reconfiguring the existing parking lot. They had to reconfigure the driveway, and I've put EV in there for the four EV spaces. The second floor, which is all new space, is 11 new hotel rooms in the blue. The orange is the new dining area in the center, which has a kitchen, and it's for guest dining. And on the left are a community areas, a community room and a gym. The green at the lower portion of the site plan is the new manager's dwelling, and the yellow is a new storage area. And this is built stacked on top of the existing ground floor. So the unique aspects of this review is that this project was designed for the development standards of the proposed new zoning code and is in conformance with the 2021 general plan and land use plan designation, which is community commercial. The applicant waited for over a year and then was informed that the new zoning code would not likely be certified by California Coastal Commission until early 2024. In meeting with staff, since the current zoning designation for the site includes a planned development overlay, it was realized that that allows the planning commission to grant exceptions to the development standards if the result is a better project or in exchange for a public benefit. There are two items in their proposed project that require planning commission consideration for approval. One is the building setbacks and a slight shortfall in onsite parking provided. The applicant is asking for the planning commission consideration of the two aspects of the project that don't meet the development standards of the current zoning code to be approved so that they can move forward with their project. If the planning commission feels that approval under the current zoning code is not possible, the applicant may withdraw their application and wait for certification of the new zoning code. So purpose of the review, and this is really going to address the two deviations from the development standards, one is the zoning code setback. The existing building has non-conforming setbacks, as narrow as 2 and 1/2 feet and 3 feet. There's one section on Morro that is 6 feet 9 inches, but the existing zoning code requirement is 10 feet on Beach, which is on the right side, 10 feet on Morro, which is at the top, 5 feet on the east side, which is the bottom, and 5 feet on the south. And this image shows kind of a yellow-orange line in all of the areas of the site that are non-conforming setbacks. And I don't know the history of that, but this building is 1946, so there was mapping done after the fact, and I think that left a lot of buildings in a non-conforming situation. So the new zoning code setbacks are zero on all four sides. It does have a floor-area ratio requirement, so it's not that you couldn't have the entire site surrounded or filled in with building, but it's zero on all four sides, which would make this conforming. So it would take the building that currently under the existing code is non-conforming, and it would make it a conforming building, and it would also allow the second floor to be stacked over the existing building units. This is a chart showing the three different things that we're comparing. The CVS standards are shown, then the community commercial, which is the proposed new zoning development standards, and then the existing building with the expansion and how it compares. So you can see the issues are three sides of the building setback are not meeting the current zoning code but are meeting the proposed new zoning code. Also to talk about on this is the parking. Parking is at the bottom, and it is under the existing zoning code. It calculates the 14 new spaces required. Community commercial, the new zoning code calculates to 13 new spaces required, and the project can provide 11 or 12 parking spaces, depending on whether you judge a motorcycle space as a space, which it does count as a space in the new zoning code. So you can see why people's heads spin around when they do this. Conceptual landscape plan, this is the conceptual plant list, and estimation of the water efficiency worksheet was also provided. So from this, the two street trees on Beach are remaining, and there are six trees that are being added along Beach and Morro that are within the property line. This is the material board, so you can see this is a change to a more modern, change with very natural colors and materials. Exterior elevations, I've only shown the outside elevations. They also provided interior elevation, so if you were in the parking area looking around, those are in the plan set, but I thought that got too confusing. So this top elevation is from Morro Ave, so this is what you'd see when you were approaching the driveways. And the lower one is the east side. This is the side that is 3 feet away from the property line, and the Harbor House Hotel is also close to its property line, so it's a very narrow channel between the two buildings. The top elevation is Beach Street. Again, this shows the slope, the bottom level, the wind, there are some new windows there, but basically I think it's showing the window configuration of the existing units, and then the second floor is added. And the bottom one is a south-side elevation, and this also has another driveway that leads to some parking as well as the manager's unit. And that concludes the presentation. The staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit and the coastal development permit by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 14-23, which includes findings and conditions of approval.
Nancy, thank you very much. Commissioners, we can ask questions of Scott and Nancy. I'd like to begin. Could you tell us what the community benefits they're offering are?
They have offered a, two of the EV parking spaces to be publicly available, and they have offered, I believe, on the corner, or they haven't decided where, but a bottle-filling station and a dog-watering station.
And just to be clear, if we approve it now, there will be some setbacks, which under the code would not be required. So the existing setbacks are going to be followed?
The existing non-conforming setbacks will be allowed.
Will be followed.
Yes, and really the effect is it would allow them to stack the units.
Which is the main reason they're doing it.
Yes.
And I'm suggesting we're also going to get some setback, which is like, I think, 2 to 3 feet for landscape edges.
Yes, they're going to follow the existing setbacks.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner?
Further clarification on the EV parking for the two, for the public use? Would there be a charge associated with that? So I'm a public person, want a charge, and is there a charge to me for using that?
I would think if you're not a hotel guest, I think there would be a.
I didn't find it, so we might want to clarify that as part of the.
The applicant can answer when they give the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Others? Asia.
Is there like some way that the public will know there's public charging stations within the, because it looks like it'd be in the interior of the hotel. Is there a sign? Is it on some kind of finder map?
I personally don't know, except that there are maps that identify to electric car users where the charging stations are. So I think there's a network of information, and there probably also could be a sign on or near the parking lot.
And then could you explain what the other benefit was? Dog-watering and water fountain or?
I think it was a bottle-filling station and a dog-water station. So historically, they've had, they had a little doghouse at the corner, and they used to have a bowl of water out there for the dogs coming back from the beach, or just, I mean, the dogs were with their owners and on leash, of course, but it was a nice benefit. So I think historically, that is something that they've had an interest in.
Could I be clear on Asia's question? Are the two charging stations for public use, or we don't know?
Two of the charging stations are for public use.
Okay, clear. Thank you. Joe?
Again, just to repeat what I think I know is the answer, if we were to approve this project today, we would have a setback that would not be required if it were approved under the new, the proposed zoning that'll be ratified sometime in.
Yes.
Yes.
And they're doing that because it's, they're continuing the structural walls down below.
The street trees on the north side, there's actually only one now, so I'll have a question for staff. Is that something the city replaces, or is that something that you ask an applicant to replace when the one's missing?
So is there, there's, I mean, is there a tree well that's empty or something?
Yes.
They're required to have street trees, so that'd probably be something that would be placed on the applicant. I'll look in through the resolution to see if there's any requirement there. If there's not, that condition could be added to the project.
Mike?
Since parking will be one of the items we have to make a finding for, I was out there today and walked it for like 30 minutes. Has parking traditionally been a problem in that area?
I personally am not aware of any parking problem in that area.
Thank you.
There is parking all along the north frontage, am I correct? That's not, it's legal to park?
There is parking on Beach Street, and Beach, that's one of the reasons why they lost some of the parking is because they were proposing driveways on Beach, and Public Works won't allow driveways, except older existing driveways on Beach.
Thanks.
Joe?
And Nancy, with respect to the parking exception, am I correct? Nancy, with respect to the parking exception, am I correct? The file mentioned three requirements. The, there be no special privilege, it not affect adversely health or safety, and it would be necessary to the full enjoyment. So those three requirements all have to be satisfied in order for the parking exception to be granted, correct?
For a parking exception, yes. But this is a planned unit, or the planned development, so you can make deviations for a better project or for a public benefit.
Meaning you have options on how to make the finding to allow the parking change?
Without giving consideration to those three requirements? Or are those three requirements still the, sort of the criteria?
So it's the criteria for the parking exception, but it has a PD overlay on it? And so you can simply make finding that the project is otherwise better than can be developed on its own? And in doing so, you could grant the, however you're looking at it, one or two spaces?
So you could, if we wanted to, we could choose to ignore those criteria?
Correct.
What do you mean by that, Joe?
I mean, I think not require, maybe ignore is maybe the best. Maybe it's, maybe it's not require?
Let me be more explicit. If we found that, say, two of those criteria were not met, and one was, we could still grant the parking exception?
Through the PD process, yes.
Other questions? If not, I'd like to invite the applicant up to do their presentation, and I understand the architect is here tonight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Steve Puglisi, one of the owners of our new company. In fact, this is the first time I'm going to announce myself as Pegasus Architecture instead of Steve Puglisi Architect.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you very, very much for having me here. I have in the audience with me the Patel family, the owners of the project. I have in the audience with me Haley Wheeler, who is our staff, working with primarily Jeff Baggy from my office over the past couple of years on the project. Perry Macbeth from Garing Taylor Associates is here as our civil engineer, and my bride Kathy is here also. We're actually here taking care of the office while my partner Jeff and his wife are on a much-needed vacation in Scotland. So we have moved back here for two weeks from New Mexico to join you folks tonight. I want to first start out by thanking the staff. We have been working with Nancy for the past couple of years. It has been an absolutely delightful relationship. Scott and I go back for much longer than that. Cindy also is almost old home week seeing these folks. We have absolutely no questions or complaints with the staff report as written, but I wanted to make a couple of comments, especially in light of the comments the planning commissioners have made. In terms of what kind of setbacks are we going to end up with? In your staff report, you will notice that the front setback, which would be allowed under the new ordinance at zero, will remain at three feet. So you will have a three-foot setback. The exterior side of Moro Avenue, which would be allowed under the new ordinance, zero setback, two and a half to six and three-quarter inches of existing building. Not a lot. The rear setback, which would be allowed at zero under the new ordinance, 16 to 20 feet is what we would be maintaining. And the interior side setback, which again allows zero, would be two foot 11 inches, just about three feet. In terms of the street tree you mentioned, we're not aware of that, but certainly if the city requirement for street trees is in effect, we will make certain our landscape architect adjusts their plan to provide for that appropriate landscaping. No question about it. I also want to chat about a couple of items. Number one, the question of parking as it has been brought up. As staff points out, under the current ordinance, our proposal would be deficit three spaces. Under the proposed ordinance, our project would be deficit one space. There's another compelling reason why we are trying to hold our parking at 25, pardon me, 25 spaces. Once under new California state law, we go to 26 or above. We are going to be doubling the number of EV stations. They are very, very expensive things to put in. So it means a lot to us to hold at that level, and we are very supportive of staff's recommendation. Now Nancy has given you a variety of choices, a menu of things you can do. Obviously, what we would most prefer is to see with the design of this project, its location, proximity to municipal services, that having a one-space deficit would be acceptable to you. Under the PD overlay, as Scott points out, you may do this without any findings of variance being required. The other two items I'd like to talk about are lighting. We have not developed a comprehensive lighting plan yet. We usually reserve that to our electrical engineer and landscape architect. We are very aware of the city's dark sky requirements, and I assure you, they will be met, and staff will very carefully work with us on that item. We also will have a comprehensive signing program that will meet all of your standards. Again, we will be working directly with staff to perfect that. As part of that signing program, and as part of the Patel family's online presence, we will be noticing the public that we have two available EV charging stations. They will be for the public. Yes, the public will pay to buy the electricity, as with any other public space, charging station.
Do you, sorry, do you know if they're Level 1 or Level 2?
I do not know. I think I've answered the questions between Haley and Perry and me, and John, Patel, the family. We are prepared to answer any other questions of planning commissioners.
Yeah. Thank you very much for being here. Commissioners, questions for the applicant and the architect?
Eric? Do you have any sort of presentation or location where the signage might go on the existing facades?
Sir, I don't as yet. We just don't.
Quick question.
Asia?
To be clear, this addition and this remodel, will it take fully tearing down the existing footprint buildings, existing buildings that are there?
Not at all. We are going to be working with the existing structure as much as we possibly can.
Okay. Thank you.
So you do have a structural study on?
Oh, yes.
You've already done that work?
Yep.
And are we talking 100% of the walls, 90%, 80%? Do you have any idea?
Any thoughts, John?
As far as I think, it's a positive statement.
We may be structurally reinforcing them, foundation work, but we believe that the majority, let me put it that way, of the structure is going to stay where.
So I'm sure you'll have new foundations and reinforcements?
Oh, yes.
So the intent is, how are you going to do the underpinning, the foundation work? You're going to keep the, you're going to add to the existing foundations, and you have an architectural study that's telling you how to do that already?
Structural. And no, we do not have that complete. We have not brought in the structural engineer, but we have looked with others at the feasibility of the work.
Okay. So at this point, there hasn't been a structural study?
That is correct.
Okay. Others? Commissioners?
Yeah, and while I was out there, I was looking at the effect of adding that second floor and those 11 units on people, you know, the impacts. It looked like it's going to do real well with people who stay there and want to see the rock better. It's going to be a real good view. But I didn't seem to see any impacts to others, say, I guess it would be south, then north, and the backside, east. There were no major impacts. Can you clarify if that's true or not?
No, I have to be very forthright with that. Anytime we are going up with a building, someone behind us is going to have their view impacted. There's no question about it.
Okay, so.
However, that being said, we are easily meeting all of the height limits. With the contemporary design utilizing a flat-style roof, we are creating the least impactful second-story design that we can.
And the reason I ask is that I couldn't see that. You know what I mean? When I was on that ground level, I couldn't see that impact, so I wanted to clarify that with you. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? If not, I'd like to go to public comment and invite the public. This is your chance to talk about the project. Terry, welcome.
Mr. Chairman and staff, first of all, let me say that I have a long and admiring relationship with Steve Puglisi, now Phoenix Architects, or whatever they are. And probably, it could be implied that I have a long and hostile relationship with staff on many issues. Unfortunately, I find myself caught in the middle of those two relationships on this project. Could we put the parking study slide up, where you discuss the parking requirements and how that's handled? Conspicuous in its absence of discussion, if you hadn't noticed, in the middle of this complex, with an absolutely spectacular downhill ocean in Moro Rock view, is a 49-seat restaurant on the second floor. Nobody asked a single question about that. The staff seems to speak of that restaurant as if it's going to be for the complimentary morning Danish. I've spent a lot of time over the years in hotels that have complimentary breakfasts. I look at the kitchen size, the layout, the bar associated with this cafe, and I'm left to conclude that implied in this building design is a full-on 49-seat restaurant on the second floor with spectacular views. I don't find anything in the staff report, and I may have missed it. I'm becoming a little senile in my old age. I just turned 75 yesterday. My wife is quick to point out that I'm not as sharp as I used to be.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I'm not asking for any special gifts here, but I would like the commission to at least ask the questions about how and what the intentions are for the operation and possibly subleasing of this cafe, what its hours of operation would be, and what the parking impacts both onsite and offsite would be, because what I see is a restaurant. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Others who would like to speak? Welcome, Sean.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Sean Green, Moro Bay. I'm a, not only a resident in the immediate vicinity, within a block or two, as well as a commercial lot owner within 500 feet of this project. I first want to speak to the Beach Bungalow Inn and their ownership. On Expedia, they have 9.2 out of 10. On Google reviews, they're 4.6 out of 5. On Yelp and others, they're 4.5 out of 5, which compares favorably in every category, including on Booking.com, they're at 8.9 or above in cleanliness, facilities, and most importantly, staff at 9.4 out of 10. That matters to me as someone who lives in that neighborhood. It's evident when you look at Beach Street. Beach Street's landscaping at this location is far superior to everywhere else along Beach Street, which is particularly important since the 2018 council temporary catastrophic decision to remove the Surf Street stairs. That has become the main pedestrian thoroughfare, and other properties within a block or two of this one have sort of turned their back on Beach Street and angled all of their frontage to the side feeder streets. I particularly appreciate this property's care with that landscaping, which sort of leads into what I think is an important discussion of community benefits or public benefits. I always think that's an important discussion. And so the three things that I wanted to mention regarding this project, first off, is that landscaping on Beach Street? Second off, is something that I think Commissioner Roshan was sort of alluding to. The fact that we could possibly approve this project while maintaining the setbacks on Beach Street is a huge public benefit that's not listed in the staff report specifically. If this project is deferred to future zoning, and we push that building all the way to Beach Street's sidewalk and consider that the side yard of this project, it makes pedestrian, the pedestrian experience that much worse as they're headed down to the rock. And lastly, something that might seem a little silly to those who don't live or walk in the neighborhood, that little doghouse on the corner makes people smile. I'm dead serious. Their decision to include a filling station, a, some sort of pet-friendly feature there at the corner, and I do strongly recommend it stays on the corner, or at least on the Beach Street side, not on Moro Avenue. It shows that this applicant knows the neighborhood. It shows they care about the neighborhood and the people that walk around in it, and I very much support the project. Thank you.
Sean, thank you very much. Others who'd like to speak to this project? Welcome, Betty.
Didn't realize how tall he was. Betty Winholz. A couple of random things, random in the sense that they're disconnected from each other, but all about this project. One has to do with the trees that are on the property. There is about a half a dozen palm trees that are there. I'm not a fan of palm trees, but they're still trees. But there's one particular tree, and it's the very tallest one, and it's been there probably since the hotel was built. And I know that the previous owners had taken real care of that to make sure that it reached the height that it did. I think it's going to be eliminated in this process. To me, that's a kind of a visual thing, and along with that will be the fountain at the front that's a visual thing that's going away. And then, what Mr. Green just mentioned was the doghouse, and those are kind of the features of this Beach Bungalow appearance, which is very much Moro Bay. And so what we're going to is a very modernistic approach, and the one thing that really stands out for me that I would change is that that front northwest corner, it is higher in the front than it is in the back. So if it kept stepping down as behind it does, maybe that would help the view behind. And as well, it's got this great hangover, and to me, that defeats our purpose of having second floors step back, because now here's this thing jutting out. And so it's not the wedding cake look that we've said that we like in town. So that, a little bit, is too much for me, is that hangover and that height. And I'm not sure that it's necessary. Mentioned the trees. I wish there was some way that you could build around that ancient tree that's 80 years old. I wonder how this fits into, because certainly as you start to upgrade and go from all these small, cutesy-looking motorhome-type hotels to the more fancy ones, it seems to me that's going to raise the price of the rooms. And I think that we're supposed to have a visitor-serving, low visitor-serving survey of some kind, and how does this fit into that? And where is that survey at this point? And do we need to be paying attention to that as we look at our hotels, including the unhosted hotels? Talked about that, talked about that. I appreciate knowing that the EV will be advertised and whether or not it's, people will pay for it. I'm assuming the water is going to be free, both to the dogs and to the humans. I do think, I think the other thing that I think is kind of odd is that it already had less parking than it should have had, and now it's going to add one more less parking. It seems like every room should have a parking space. And I see that what they're doing is eliminating parking instead of adding parking. And I don't know that with their design, there's anything you can do about that, but I would assume that hotel parking should be off-site. And other than that, oh, I just have a little minute, then let me say. There was a reference to the old, or the current zoning code. It's 17.27.050A, but, and this is just a technicality maybe for Mr. Graham, I can't access the current zoning code online. Now, every time I try to punch in the old one, like, say, 2015 or something, it brings me up to the new one that's been sent to Coastal. So I wasn't able to look at that, and maybe that's, you know, I'm frequently complaining at city council meetings about our. at city council meetings about our website, and maybe this is one of those technicalities they could look at. And let's see. Also, it mentioned the bill of 2097 where if you are within half a mile of some kind of mass transit, that you don't have to provide as much parking. It seems to me that's not applicable here, because the kind of mass transit that 2097 is talking about, we don't have in Moro Bay. And so maybe that is one that you can't use. Thank you.
Betty, before you go, thank you for talking, but it's rare that I get to tell you that you're wrong.
Oh, good.
And you did say that palm trees are trees. They're actually plants.
Oh. Thank you. Now I know why. There, it's okay not to whack.
The only time I'll ever say you're wrong, I promise. Welcome, Bill.
Hi. Just a quick comment on the project itself. The Beach Bungalows, I mean, that's early Moro Bay Americana, beautiful. The new design, I think is spectacular also. My only thought was, like Terry brought up, there might be a parking issue if it's overparked with the, if it's a restaurant or if it's just for the guests. And I think he probably clarified whether the area of the coffee would be guest-only or if it's open to the public, then you're going to run into a real parking issue. So that was the only comment. But the new design is great. Hate to see the old go. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Others who would like to speak? Ray, anybody in the queue? You still back there, Ray?
One moment. We're having a little technical difficulty with Zoom. Commissioner, we have no raised hands.
Great, thank you. Last chance to talk, public comment. Hearing none, I will close public comment. Scott, can I take on some of these questions that the public has asked? Can we start with the restaurant operation? Or Nancy, is that yours?
So the restaurant is proposed as a guest-only dining room and kitchen, and that's the way it will be permitted. If they change in the future and want it to be open to the public, then it'll require a new use permit and new parking analysis.
Second, and I'm not sure who this question might be for, but the stepping-down suggestion that Betty made is actually a really good suggestion. Maybe let's put that in the queue, and when we might have a couple of questions for the architect, we could ask them at that point. Because what she said is absolutely right. It does involve the height as well as the, and the height does seem tall to me on, you know, on the front of the building. Could we go to, could you show the elevations, Nancy? I'd like to see both the beach and the east elevation. So commissioners, now's our chance to kind of make comments, but I'd like to start with, could I see the east one, Nancy? Yeah. My concern is that large blank wall, which is facing the neighbor's property, and it's really substantial. And then if you go to the beach elevation, it's kind of the same on the ground floor. So as you're walking by this building, commissioners, it's a very sparse window elevation with, from what I can see, very little articulation, which is interesting, because the second floor seems to be to be really highly animated. So that's one concern I would like to bring to the architects as well. Commissioners, other questions or comments?
I had the same thoughts. That's why I was asking about the signage. Where is the signage going with respect to the blank spaces? It's a little, the large gray volume is, not knowing exactly what the plant typology is, it's a little difficult to view. I don't know how to resolve it, and I don't intend to resolve it, but it's just something to point out.
My question, we'll invite the architect up and ask him two or three things. Others? Joe?
I would agree, in view of the numerous discussions we've had at this commission about the need for varying the articulation and the variety of materials and the like, I think we should examine this a little more closely.
With respect to the western elevation facing the neighbors, that steps quite a bit from, you know, it's a sort of a funny look when you're looking at it from the side, because one is...
You mean the east elevation, right?
Looking, sorry, looking north, my bad. From the neighboring apartment building, looking at the project, that wall, which is not shown here, is essentially facing the side of an apartment building, and it's stepped. And I don't know that you want to encourage a whole lot of windows overlooking the neighbor. And so I'm a little hesitant to say they should change that. It's the facade that faces the street on the north side that is the one I think is the issue.
Okay. Asia, any comments? How about on the community benefits piece?
Yeah, my only thought with the community benefits piece was to have some kind of signage for both community benefits, the interior parking and the exterior watering hole. Be nice to have some kind of public invitation to some degree. Yeah, that's my current, I have to agree with Bill that the new design is great, but we're sorry to see the old one go. This is one of my favorite little spots to point people to downtown. Actually, I have a lot of really fond memories there. So I know this is a new design, and it'd be cool to see some kind of recognition or pointing to the old design somehow.
Joe?
I'm trying to evaluate the community benefit element, particularly the setback. You know, and it's difficult, because I'm balancing the proposed law says no setback, but clearly, we should be basing our decision on what the existing law is and not what might be a proposed law or even a likely law. And this doesn't meet the requirements of the setback for the existing code, but it is more generous than the proposed code. Yet in reality, the setback is such because there's certain practical benefits to keeping the walls where they are. So it makes it very difficult for me to assess just how significant the additional community benefit of that extra setback is.
It's essentially a landscape space, which I would miss horribly should that building meet the new code and be right on the sidewalk, especially in that it's an entry to the town.
And it's not really a community benefit either, though, right?
Well, it would be under the new code, because it'd be, they'd be giving...
Under the new code, it would be, yeah.
In my opinion.
Yeah.
And can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Should this be submitted under the new code? Then the only thing that we would have to examine would be the parking, the lack of the missing parking spot. And we would not, we would still be able to discuss community benefit.
There's no community benefit person for a component for a compliant project.
So the benefit of...
I mean, maybe you get into that conversation. I mean, the new code actually has a number of different ways to meet parking requirements, too. But I mean, maybe you have that conversation as it relates to the, you know, one parking space or something, like there's something else that you want. I mean, it's a discretionary process, so you could probably talk, you know, have that discussion, but really, there's no community benefit discussion to be had for the most part.
The benefit of evaluating it now is that we get to ask for community benefits.
And I think just while we're there, let's talk about parking, you know? Providing to EV parking spots for community use is like, where I come from, the Bay Area, Silicon Valley, you know, people are going to use it, you know, especially with the push towards EVs. So I think that's a huge benefit. And, you know, not too many people will provide that kind of benefit for free for use. You know, they will be charged, which makes sense, but that wasn't dictated, so I want to make sure it's clear in the document. But I just think it's a huge benefit that we don't realize until you need that parking station.
I do think we should require that those be level two. Level one is essentially a 110 plug, and to charge a car takes like two weeks. Level two, you know, you can do overnight.
Yeah. So in other words, Asia, what I'm saying, Commissioner King is just saying that one parking spot we lose would greatly be made up with those two community EV charging stations. That's my argument, especially where I come from, where everybody wants these charging stations.
Well, let's be clear. What's required under the new code? What kind of EV parking? Would it be just one or two?
Two.
Two, and I believe that the building codes says level two.
So what part of this is a community benefit?
You get two more, four.
Well, they don't have to make it available to the public.
Yeah. Oh, there you go.
That's it.
But we get four.
And there's four, right?
Yeah.
There's four.
Oh, there's four.
Four, yeah, there's four EVs.
Got it, got it.
That's huge.
So it's two extra, got it. If I could chime in on the community benefit, it seems to me that that's somewhat underdone from what we're offering, that I think we could ask for more community benefit, and that would still be reasonable and fair.
Let me, can I chime in a little bit? Because the way I read this is that there is, under the new code, really, there's, they're short of parking space, and there's no community benefit required. There would just be an in-lufy. The community benefit in my mind is just simply to take up the gap, let's call it, between the current code and the new code. We're getting a little bit, and they're giving us a bonus. And I also think that we're getting a bonus of the frontage landscaping areas. So I'm okay with it as it's written. I agree, dog bowl, whatever, it's not that, but it's cute. It is fun. I really love that little corner, and it's stupid and goofy, and I like that part about Moro Bay. And so the dog bowl hearkens back to that to some degree, and if it's right in the corner, as Sean suggested, I think it's a fun idea, and we'll get hardly used. And I'm interrupting your time, sorry.
So you're saying you don't like that idea? Okay, thank you. Others?
But I would note, on the property, it is possible to create another parking space. It's not, it's not an impossibility, but they've chosen to, I think they've eliminated two distinct parking areas in order to come up with the current plan.
And they'll be using, I intend to ask for an in-lufy for that loss of parking space, and then also...
You say you do.
Yeah, I would, I say we should ask for the in-lufy. I'm sorry if I misspoke. But they also have the entirety of Beach Street frontage, which is, have you ever seen a car parked there only during like car shows?
Other points we want to make before I invite the architect up?
Can I just ask a question?
Please, Asia.
What are the requirements for, I don't know how, I don't remember the technical term for like affordable hotel units? Aren't there some...
We don't have any that would apply to this project currently.
Okay.
Oh, in fact...
By the way, we have lots of affordable hotel rooms in town.
Okay. I didn't know if it was required for every site.
But let's do address that question that Betty raised on visiting-serving hotels. Scott, is there any kind of expectation there for new projects, the survey that Betty was talking about?
No, the new visitor-serving, the low-cost visitor-serving accommodations policy is written into the new code. It was one of the things we were working with the Coastal Commission on, and it'll be an extra agenda item to discuss and, you know, what that looks like. But right now, we wouldn't, there wouldn't be any triggers for it, because we have a lot of affordable rooms and stuff.
So let's say this project, let's say we approve it as tonight, and it gets approved by council, what would the additional expectation be on this project?
There wouldn't be any. We're not at a point right now where we would be triggering, and right now, we have them required down on the waterfront, because those spaces are, well, in the new ordinance, they'll be required down on the waterfront. They're required now anyway through the coastal development permitting process, because the coastal development permit along the waterfront, on the waterside, is issued by the Coastal Commission, and so they do require it down there, because those facilities are unique. And in other areas of town, we have the policy that puts in place, it tells you when it's triggered.
Great. Other questions, or can I invite the architect up? Sir, would you mind coming back up? Steve, right?
It is.
Steve, thank you for your help. I have a couple of questions. I'm going to go through them with you and then see if, these are probably issues that would depend, would decide my vote. I do like the point that Betty made, that the stepping on the hill definitely does make a project less tall in the front. It makes it smaller scale, and it definitely fits that site. The opportunity to step this hotel, which is stepped now when the one-story, could you do it in the two-story?
Possibly. And let me be a little more specific. We are installing an elevator. Everything we do now in architecture, we have these three letters, ADA, that are emblazoned in our...
It would require a sloping walkway, I would imagine.
Well, as when we get up to the upper level, we want to make certain that that upper level works at a continuous floor as best we can to make as many of those rooms as possible accessible. The roof, however, that's a different story. When we look at the elevations of the building, you can see that the design architect had articulated and stepped. Could we, with the permission of my client, relook at that and perhaps adjust that to get more of a stair stepping down the street instead of having the tallest element?
I would encourage you to consider that, because if you do look at the, can we look at the front elevation, Nancy? That's tall. For Moro Bay, this is a very tall front facade.
Are you referring to the entirety of the facade on Beach Street?
Well, I'm looking at the west elevation right now.
Are you thinking about just the corner, or are you talking about the entirety of the facade?
The entire thing. The other option would be to not step every room, but to somehow step half of it.
I understand.
The ambition is to get a much lower facade on the west on Moro Avenue. I mean, my idea of context, this is tall.
I understand.
Okay.
And when you consider that once we get past an appropriate window head height, frankly, the rest of that ceiling, it's pretty much fluff, so...
Right, but what I'm seeing is the height is actually in the first floor, right? Because to...
Correct. What we are stuck with on the first level, that has to stay where it is on the existing buildings. But what we can try to adjust is how we articulate the second-level roofs to get more a sense of stepping down the street.
Let me just say one more time, the height is to the floor of the second floor. In other words, you set the floor in the back, and then it's one level all the way across. And so what you have, yeah, go to the elevator, or the perspective, that's a good one.
Right.
And so what you see is exceptionally tall. We can look at the, what are the heights, finished floor height from grade on Moro Avenue? Do you know, Nancy?
No, the type is too small for me to read. Their tallest roof from average natural grade is just under 30 feet, and the requirement is 30 feet.
But that's to the top of the roofs?
Yes.
Yeah. Sir, are you asking us to try and articulate and lower the second-level finished floors?
Yes.
And step...
I'm asking if that's at all possible.
That's tough to cut. That is very, very tough. That means we're going to be building rooms that would not be accessible. What we have ramping at 1 and 12, that makes it awfully tough. It's rare to see the second level of a hotel not try to have a consistent floor level. I would want to promise you...
It's actually one of the problems for Moro Bay, because our small scale exists, because we don't have a lot of... we don't have a lot of that.
Right.
And so to Betty's point, once you do a new building, it, it becomes oversized. In other words, it's, I don't know, we can get the number, but I can tell just by looking at it how much height is in that front room. Okay, so let's hold that point. The other points I have...
And I just want to clarify that.
Sure.
They are building on top of an existing structure.
That is correct.
Right? Right? So and I can see how you're making the top smaller, the heights.
We can do what we can to skinny down...
But see how the lower units, the units on Moro Bay step down the hill?
Sure.
So what happens is you're adding an extra three feet on the first floor.
But that's still existing.
I've heard Mr. Plicy...
That's still existing.
Yes.
I've heard Mr. Plicy discuss the lowering of the ceiling in that front room and continuing that stepping down and to my eye, that would be enough. I know what he's saying and given all the constraints and pluses and minuses, I would...
It would certainly help, yes.
Agreeing to lowering that front, especially on the corner, overall, you know, outside height of the roof so that it matched those in front or some slightly different dimension.
Nice.
Rather, it looks approximately like three feet maybe is above. If they dropped it by, I don't, I don't want to say a number, but some sort of stair stepping down instead of up, I'd, I'd be, I'd be in favor of that and I don't need to go any further on that subject.
Can I just make a comment?
Yeah, please, Asia.
But if, you know, another building were to be built across the street or next door, they could still go to this 30-foot height on that facade? So my point being that we're kind of, I feel like it's kind of asking extra for something that's in compliance, which I know we're looking for the benefits and we're looking to comment on the, you know, best, highest use of the project, but...
I think my division is that one of the, one of our responsibilities is to look at context and what's going on here is the building looks bigger because of that need the architect has to make the second level all the same. And that second level is set at the back where the room is lowest, but because the hill goes down, you're adding an extra three or four feet to the front. And my concern is now, second point, is all the gray area seems to me to be inarticulate. And that's on Beach Street. And let's look at the west elevation too, if we could, Nancy. I think, like, see in the left piece, you have one window and you've got, I'm going to guess 18 feet of stucco. And Eve, you know, I mean, that's, it's kind of blank.
But what is, what is that? How does lowering the height of the second floor fix that?
It doesn't. So my question is, I'm concerned about, and then look at the east elevation below. That's an awful long blank wall that's looking at the neighbor.
That's, that's four-step hotels.
That's a hotel, actually. That's a hotel behind us.
The hotel is...
You're looking at the elevation facing the other hotel, which is essentially a canyon. Two, two-story hotels.
Chair Roshan?
Yeah.
The picture on the upper left hand shows you the approximate...
Oh, that's the actual distance?
Yeah.
So how far back is that hotel?
Three feet.
It's like, they're probably like six feet apart to the decks.
And there's no windows on that end?
There's a, about a six-foot fence in between the two.
But are there any windows in the hotel next door?
It looks like they have outdoor spaces.
Yeah, they have, they have like, they have like patio areas on the lower floor and then decks on the upper floor.
So I guess my question is, there's no articulation. There could be. I don't know what it might be. I would leave that up to the architect. It just seems to me those long blank expanses could be more articulated and it would definitely help the texture and character of Moro Bay. So that would be my encouragement on that one.
One of the things we've done in the past, Chair, is that we've delegated to staff, the director, the opportunity to work with our applicant because we're, he's meeting basically most of our, if not all of our requirements, but work with staff to get to the best possible spot without holding them up. We've done that before.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting windows, I'm suggesting...
But is that something the applicant's willing to do?
Absolutely.
Work with staff to get to that sweet spot.
We are absolutely delighted to work through that.
And let's say we would do that?
Yep.
The other thing I would love to see is that it does make a difference to me and I think the commission, the lighting plan is something we'd like to see and also the signage plan.
Signage, yes, yes.
And if we could make that part of that review, it could be ministerial and then what, often we've involved one or two commissioners with that?
Yeah, and in fact, that'll be part of the, the approval, is that these things will be done, right? Part of the approval process will be, these noted, that staff will do the following.
Does, does that make sense, Steve?
Absolutely, absolutely. And while I'm here, I want to speak to my colleague, Terry, that...
I'll wake up, all right.
By the way, my birthday at 75 was a year before his, so I'm still older and senior to him, so that's the deal, right?
You guys look so good.
Well, hey.
I have hair. I have hair.
The Lord just made a couple of great bald heads. I just happen to have one.
Okay, so I think we're getting somewhere...
If I could, Mr. Chairman, we, as Nancy was very articulate with, that cafe space, it is a wonderful space, but it is specifically and exclusively designed only for the hotel guests. And we will make absolutely certain, if the project is going to be conditioned as such, that that does not become a restaurant to create a parking problem.
Appreciate it, Steve.
Very good.
And I'm going to turn that to Nancy and Scott. What kind of process is involved in changing that? Is it another public process?
Yeah, they had, they have to come forward. One of the issues that was rightfully pointed out by Mr. Simons is that as soon as you create a publicly available restaurant, you run into parking issues related to it and so that would be, that would be the problem.
So it would be, to change that to a public restaurant would be a difficult...
Yeah, I mean, they don't have the availability on site to park it, so that's, that becomes the issue. And that's not what it was approved as, right? It was, it was approved as, you know, the breakfast area, you know, for the, for the guests or whatever, so.
Got it. And I guess my last interest is that a structural report, because quite often, when you go to take down an old building and you get the structural engineer build, involved, there seems to be very little left. So I think it would be interesting to sort of, for staff to review what, in a preliminary conceptual way, is, is it going to be possible to save that first floor?
I mean, generally, a structural is provided with the building permit and if there's any change required from the approved planning permit, it may need another modification.
And if we could maybe ask at this ministerial review, maybe at least a conceptual structural report might be available to consider that issue?
Can, can I also ask one more clarifying? This, this is going to be at staff level. We're giving, we're getting two EV stations for community use. Now, one day, uses, you know, that, the need is going to just keep on increasing. Where's the cutoff line? In other words, how often does a community get to use them? Because the hotel manager may end up getting one night, 10 cars. So where's that benefit go? If the community can't use it because he's got tenants that need it, where's that line? Where's the sweets? Again, it could disappear, that benefit.
Well, I mean, it's going to be signed and it's going to be, and the project has it available. It's part of the project approval, so it has to be available for public use.
Okay. In other words, he can't say, the manager or the owner can't say, well, my tenant, my, my, the people who are staying here need it. Need those two.
I mean, I guess if you wanted, we could add a condition to it that says it has to be publicly available during a timeframe, if you want.
Okay, that's where I'm getting at because I could see it just becoming an issue.
It's, it's entirely up to you. We could, we can do that and then, you know, we could add, you know, the requirement. I think it was interesting the commission to sign it too, so happy to do that.
I like that.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if there are no further questions, I'm open to a motion.
Can we run through the, what we think we've discussed? I have a little list just to make sure you...
I'm happy to help someone do the motion.
Yeah.
Before a motion, I just have a quick comment about this. This site used to be the El Rey, as I recall. The oldest name, I think, is the El Rey. And this is an absurd comment, but I'm going to make it anyway because it's funny. So there's a, two famous French philosophers. One is Simone de Beauvieu and the other is Jean-Paul Sartre. So Simone de Beauvieu stayed in this hotel in 1947 or 48, I'm not certain. And she wrote a letter to Jean-Paul Sartre while staying at those hotel. And I'm not going to give you the contents of that letter, but let's, suffice it to say that it's an interesting letter. And it's just goofy that the little town of Moro Bay is suddenly in the middle between these two French philosophers and it's a subjective topic amongst a couple of people, probably only two people in the Western Hemisphere, but it has come up. And I just thought I'd bring that up. So it's goofy. If I can get the letter, it might be something you'd want on the wall in the hotel. Or maybe not, actually. But the motion would then be, having said that...
Yeah.
That I would essentially move to approve, and I'm not going to go through the numbers just yet, but based on the addition of the street tree, if it is indeed necessary, I may have missed seeing something, but it looked like a street tree was missing.
And the project, the project includes the condition for street trees, so it's already in.
Yeah, just if, and then, and then...
We don't need to add that?
No.
It's covered, right?
Then the dog bowl, I think everybody loves, and I think Sean suggested be on the corner and I think that's the location so that people going in either direction get to use it, if that's, if you guys agree. The in-lu fee for the missing parking space, the level two charging, which is advertised as well as signed, and I would further add that the level two charging available to the public should be in the most public-facing parking spots perhaps? Or would you say maybe in the least public-facing, so the least likely to be used by the, the other guest? That's kind of a question.
I'd rather not be so specific.
Okay, I'll leave that out.
But I do think the hours were mentioned by Mike.
And if the, like, the signage could be, like, viewed from the road?
On the internet and...
Well, from the road, like, it's not just a spot in front of the parking spot, not just a small sign in front of the parking spot.
You'd have to see it from the street.
It's actually most important to have it available on the internet so that the various services can, because the cars will tell you where the stations are.
So it should be both in the motion?
Yeah.
And then with some articulation to be determined between the architect and staff to that eastern facade that you were discussing?
Both. For me, it's the eastern facade and the beach facade.
Okay. And then lowering the roof on the corner was a subject we had back and forth on? Is that something, I, I would say that if there's a agreement...
The architect feels that that's an option, so I'd like to ask for that, yes.
And then the lighting plan has been discussed, we'll go back to...
So let's, let's, what if we do this? That when the ministerial review happens, I think this project is important enough to us that, Scott, we can invite two commissioners to that meeting and we would review the architectural adjustments in height and further articulation. We would look at the lighting plan, we would look at the signage plan. And if at all possible, I'd love to see a conceptual structural plan.
So then, having said all that, I'll go through the, the motion to approve the conditional use permit, CUP 22, sorry, I'm on the wrong, not the right one, CUP 22-10 and coastal development permit, CDP 22-039 for an expansion of an existing hotel located at 1050 Moro Avenue.
A second. Scott, do we need, Nancy, do we need to repeat that motion to make it's a little complex?
No, I think I have it.
Okay. We trust you. So we have a, a motion and a second. Any comments, commissioners?
So we, we are convinced that it would be too onerous to ask for that additional parking space. Could anyone make an effort to persuade me of that?
Commissioner Angrafia. I think that the community benefit portion of it, I don't want to say eliminated it, but it made it...
Excuse me, but my, my understanding, there are two separate issues. There is the community benefit and then there is the parking element. And essentially, the community benefit is to allow an exception to the setback, which is five or more feet and is now three. I'm mindful of the fact that under the proposed, there won't even be that. But if we're dealing with the current law, the requirement is five feet, it's only three feet.
It's actually 10 feet.
Or 10 feet, hence the community benefit.
Yeah.
The separate issue is the parking for which there are those three, three criteria. And when I look at it, it clearly, the, the absence of a parking space doesn't adversely affect health, safety or welfare, but it certainly is not necessary to the enjoyment of the property and to me, it does look a bit like a special privilege.
And where I was, yeah, where I was going with this since I was the second, is that fact that they're providing two EV charging stations for community use on schedule. They only need to have two EV charging stations, right? They're going to double that.
See, I disagree with that. I think, I, I think the community benefit aspect is again, for the exception to the setback. The community benefit is not to procure an exception to the parking requirement.
Now, just to reiterate, I think that we do get a benefit of the landscape buffer that we wouldn't get if they went to the zero lot line, which they are entitled to under the new code if they wait a year.
I'm persuaded by that, which is why I asked this body if they could persuade me as to the missing parking space.
And I would go on to say that along Beach, there's an enormously vacant parking area.
You know, I, I have to say, I, I, if, if I were to be the minority vote on this, you know, I would, I would hate to have this project, no, I mean, were, were I to persuade you and this project were to be rejected, only to be renewed under the proposed and that, and that three-foot setback go away, then I would be regretful. But I'm also mindful that it's not likely to go away because of the original building design.
So I'll offer, when you stand back and look at this in its totality?
Yeah.
It's actually a very nice project. It's well-designed, it's well-considered and the architect and the owner are willing to work with us to improve these areas that we think will make a difference.
And you've also noticed, I, I've voted against projects when, when I've known that I'm going to be in the losing position, so you, you should feel free to vote against, you know, vote with your conscience and, you know, if it goes, it goes. We have a motion and you don't have to vote for it.
He knows that.
I agree. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out in my muddled brain what it is I want.
And in fact, Commissioner, this commissioner has voted because of parking against projects, right? Because of parking, you voted against a project. So now he's voting for a project and he's losing a parking, so you can be, you know, flexible. This is very a unique situation and all of us on this side have tried to convince you.
Well, and I wasn't quite done. The, the, not only do I think it's a well-done project, but I think the owner has every right to not go forward and to wait until the zoning ordinance is approved and then to do it on his own at that point. So for me, the balance of those things makes it a better project and I do like supporting the fact that because it's a good project, we would help the owner get it started sooner rather than later.
Just clarification, are we going to choose the planning commissioners to review? I mean, I don't have a problem volunteering.
We could. Eric and I could do it?
Yeah, sure. No, let's just clarify that, that way we can move that. We don't have to reach out.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Asia.
Sorry, one last quick question. Are you guys keeping the same name now that it's not really bungalows?
I think so, we keep the same name.
Cool.
Who's the boss?
Well, thank you very much for having the team here and having your architect and what's that?
Yeah, the public couldn't hear that. He was screaming microphone.
Oh, too late.
Yeah, too late, it's okay.
At this point, I'd like to ask for a vote.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Angrafia?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Chair Roshan?
Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Thank you.
So passed. And let me thank you all very much for your patience and your attention to our points of view. Thank you. I'd like to suggest a five-minute break before we go to zoning code.
Thank you. Thank you. Very, very much. Thank you. I don't want to. You're a saint. You know? Well, I knew you'd be one of them, but I'm... She's right. Working on it. And, and, yours is my track. Thank you. Yes. And, and, yeah. Usually I want to help. Didn't come for the project, sorry. No worries. I didn't realize that you felt away when you were speaking. It sounded like you were just dancing. Well, I said you brought it over, and then it was left undisputed for a while. I think it was... I do, right? For right. Thanks, Ryan. You know, it's great for us to have you. Well, hopefully in the future, we... I wanted to know that you know my class, my name, name assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment. I mean, I'm... Yes, thank you. It's a meeting, very. Yeah, can I know, you go in, and you have your... Well, hopefully in the future, we... I want to know that you know my class, my name, name, assignment.
Commissioners, we are resuming. And I'd like to introduce B2, which is Case Number Plan More Obey, Zoning Code slash Implementation Plan Amendment slash General Plan slash Local Coastal Program, the LCP, Coastal Land Use Plan Map Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment. With that, we get to hear from Cindy. Nice to see you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Roshan and members of the Planning Commission. Yes, this item before you is a request for an amendment of the city's zoning code and coastal implementation plan. And this is part of the Plan More Obey project. And I think we need to put the agenda up on the screen. Oh, sorry, the presentation. So here is a presentation agenda of how the presentation will go. There are multiple proposed amendments for your review this evening. I will first go over an overview and a history of what those amendments are and why we're here tonight. As you will recall, the zoning code was just adopted by both Planning Commission and City Council last year.
Cindy, a quick question. How long do you think your presentation is?
I'd like to say 10 minutes.
Great, thank you.
I tend to be a little bit long-winded sometimes. I always try to keep it short.
Thank you.
And then two main edits really to discuss, and those are in the bullets, the Coastal Commission requested edits, and then there are some city cleanup edits. Included within this is a request for a land use map and a zoning map amendment to correct the land use and zoning designations for two of the Dog Beach parcels. And then I will also discuss two properties on Preston Lane that came to staff's attention after the staff report was released. And then the recommendation to City Council for adoption at the point where the Planning Commission gets through the review and understanding, of course, that that might not happen this evening since there are several edits. So just some history. So why are we here? So Plan More Obey, if you recall, is a process that started in 2015. The city adopted its general plan, local coastal program, coastal land use plan, the LUP, in 2021. That was certified by Coastal Commission just three months after the city adopted it. It went very fast. We'd been working hand in hand with the Coastal Commission for the previous six years. And so, fast forward to November of 2022, when the city adopted the zoning code, coastal implementation plan via ordinance 654. It was staff's expectation that in December of 2022, when we submitted the application for certification, that we would experience the same very fast certification process. Unfortunately, we did not. There was some staff turnover on the Coastal Commission's side. It took until May 2023 wherein we received multiple edits requested by Commission staff, which I will itemize in the presentation tonight, which includes added chapters to the city's implementation plan and some text edits related to ensuring compliance with coastal act requirements and then also avoiding any coastal resource issues or impacts. And so, last item on this slide here is, we're here today with the package of all of those coastal requested amendments, edits, and then the city cleanup edits. And before I go any further, I do feel this is important to clarify for the record, and this is mentioned in the staff report. But one key advantage that the city did when it adopted its updated zoning code last year is the 2022 zoning code updated the city's 1995 zoning code. That zoning code, the entirety of that zoning code, was the city's coastal implementation plan. And so that meant that anytime the city wanted to change something, for example, the height of a deck or the size of a fence, we had to go through the city process, get approval, and then we had to submit an application for an LCP amendment to Coastal Commission, and then wait six, nine, 12, you know, whatever the state's requirement process is. And so during the Plan More Obey update process, we had discussed with coastal staff about separating out portions of the zoning code to IP chapters. And the idea was that the zoning code, which implements the city's general plan and LCP, the goal of the zoning code update was to bring it up to modern zoning code standards. It was to streamline the process and avoid inconsistencies for both the public, residents, business owners, for staff, and the city as a whole. And those portions of the zoning code that are the IP, as I will say repeatedly in the presentation, you will see those, they're identified with a notation IP. The advantage of that is that the city is able to make changes to things that don't impact coastal resource protection. For example, you know, community design, for example, or ADUs. Making sure I don't make a mistake here. The city could change those, its local preference, and we would pass an ordinance change, and that would be final at the City Council level. So that is a key advantage, and that's something that the Coastal Commission has support in. However, one of the key edits that they added is that they requested that there be additional chapters added to the IP. And so we thought we had very few chapters that would be part of the IP, and then the rest of the chapters would be part of the zoning code. And so, the way that staff put together the documents, so the zoning code IP is on the city's website. It is identified, all of the Coastal Commission edits are outlined with red font. Anything new is underlined, anything proposed for deletion is in red, strike-through font. And then the blue edits represent the city edits.
Yeah, and just to add quickly, Cindy, that advantage is substantial.
It is substantial, and it is a serious time saver for the city and for residents itself. One of the difficulties is, is for those chapters that are not part of the IP, when the City Council adopted ordinance 654, that zoning, that portion of the zoning code became effective 30 days later. Those IP chapters did not. And so, the issue is that we, as a city, are stuck between two zoning codes. We still have the 1995 zoning code that is part of, that was the entirety of the IP. We have that in effect, and then we have the 2022 non-IP zoning code. So it gets a little convoluted, and so we are here before you to request approval on those edits. We talked to Coastal Commission staff today, actually, about this. We let them know that this item was going forward to the Planning Commission, and then, as required, it will go to the City Council. And they said they are excited to hear that, and that they are, they've already started, you know, doing what they can, putting the staff report together for our future certification hearing. It will take what it takes to get through the city process, but the goal is to get approval for these requested edits in that form, and then resume going back up to the Coastal Commission to complete that amendment application. And because there are a lot of edits, and the way that we organize this is we put together a spreadsheet that itemizes by row in page order all of the edits and why the edits are being proposed, starting with Coastal Commission edits first. And we did the same format with the general plan, the Plan More Obey process, because it gets a little unwieldy, there's a lot of edits, the zoning code's 450 pages. And so these next couple of slides provide, albeit, a very brief summary of those edits. I do have a, I do have the spreadsheet, which is Exhibit B to the staff report, that when I'm done with the presentation, we can bring that up on the screen, and that will give, like, the specific reason about why these changes are being proposed. So I'm just going to go through these rows, these first couple of slides here. So the summary of Coastal Commission edits, and so what they are changing here is to show, in row one of that spreadsheet, you will see all of the chapters that they are asking for us to add to the IP, and there are several. Their edits, you know, in summary relate to SB9 development, parking for accessory dwelling units, a new coastal parking boundary area, and so for ADUs, if you are west of this coastal parking boundary, to avoid any impacts to...
So are you going to go through each?
I'm just summarizing them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll get to that. And then low-cost visitor serving accommodations, visual resources, ESHA, and the like. And rows 2 through 13, on your spreadsheet, you will see those are miscellaneous text additions, as I said, where they wanted to clarify coastal resource protection policies. Rows 14, and when we get to the spreadsheet, we can go through this again, but just to clarify this for the public, this is, row 14 is talking about low-cost accommodations. Rows 15 through 20, those are policy clarifications and refinements regarding these topics that I just mentioned. Row 21 is adding, as I said, additional zoning chapters are being added to the IP. And, you know, for example, one of these chapters is reasonable accommodations. There are some chapters that they're adding to the IP that we questioned, why is that a coastal act requirement? Why would you, why would that be important to you? And the reasoning was, is that if a project were to go to them on appeal, they would want additional resources they can use within the implementation plan for something, for them to be able to evaluate the project. And then there are parking policies. They are requesting a change to the way the city calculates parking on the waterfront. The way that the zoning code was adopted eliminated parking requirements on the waterfront, and rather than eliminate them outright, they are requesting that they, that a new method for parking reductions be implemented. And that is specified in that, in those rows 23 through 27, and then rows 28 through 31, additional refinements and clarification by coastal staff. And then this next slide is just the summary of the cleanup edits by the city. As I stated at the beginning of the presentation, when the city updated its land use plan, the properties for Dog Beach were inadvertently changed to agriculture from open space. It's supposed to be open space, and so this corrects that.
And that was just a clerical mistake?
It was just a clerical error, because the color for agriculture to open space is just a light green to a darker green.
Thank you.
And so, tonight's item was noticed to make that land use map amendment as well. And then there are city cleanup edits regarding use classifications, what's allowed use, fences, driveway lengths. These really have to do with typos and things that were overlooked when we went from the admin draft of the zoning code to the final draft of the zoning code. And then also in addition, as the city was using the zoning code since last November and explaining requirements to potential applicants, there were some clarification areas where we realized that what we thought was clear when the code was adopted last year. And so those are being recommended for update and refinement, notably the signed ordinance. Row 42 updates the ADU ordinance to be current with the most latest legislation from the state. And then the last few rows in that spreadsheet, you will see additional refinements as well. This is the description of the change to Dog Beach and the APN parcels associated with that. And then just to see what this looks like, the city's existing adopted land use map is showing that. That's actually, on the left, you see the project site outlined in red. That's showing it as ag, it should be open space. And then the approval would also change the corresponding zoning for that. There was an additional error that was discovered, and so in the agenda correspondence that was released this afternoon, we did get a request from the property owner for these Preston Lane properties. The property owner, the two parcels for discussion tonight are outlined in red, but the property owner also owns the property to the right in yellow. And the understanding was, in the last few days, is that the property on the left, so the left is land use and the right is the zoning map. And the understanding was, is that the land use was changed to industrial when it, on the land, on the land use map, which is correct. And on the zoning map, we made the error, and we changed it to residential. However, this morning, when putting together this presentation, it was discovered that only the triangular-shaped parcel on the left slide, which is showing is purple, is an industrial. And so, the property owner's requesting that the property be changed from residential to industrial, which is the correct zoning. And in order to do that, it'd have to be consistent with the land use. And so, staff would need to notice this to change the parcel on the left that is yellow and outlined in red to be industrial as well. And apparently this, they were able to provide some evidence to the record that this actually was an error that persisted with the adoption of the 95 zoning code. The on-the-ground land use and zoning is industrial, and so it's consistent with the development of Plan More Obey. And just for the record, staff did review this pursuant to CEQA, or California Environmental Quality Act. Plan More Obey, the project was approved with a programmatic EIR. There are no changes to what is being proposed in the proposed amendments by the Coastal Commission or city cleanup edits or these land use and zoning map amendments that would create any additional environmental impact or anything beyond what was previously understood or known to, known at the time of the certification of the EIR. And so, included with that, with the resolution, when you get to the point where you would make a motion, that does include a CEQA finding that no subsequent analysis is required. The staff recommendation is that the Planning Commission review the adoption hearing draft with the amendments. That is, the link is included in your staff report, and adopt PC Resolution 1523. What the process would be, would be to forward a favorable recommendation to City Council for adoption of the zoning code and IP with this CEQA finding. I know that there is some discussion to talk about downtown heights as well, and I do have a slide available for when it comes to that point.
Okay.
But until then, I'm available to answer any questions.
Great. Commissioners, can we make the questions quick? Asia.
I think it's quick. I'm wondering, as we go through this or look at this, how much are we able to influence the red line changes that coastal has negotiated with you guys?
So, I don't know, you want to answer that one, Scott?
The red line changes are related to coastal policy. They're largely, most of the, most of the edits bring things back into the implementation plan that weren't in there. And then we did move some, some text around inside the document to locate it. It would depend on what it is.
So can I ask that question in a different way? If we change something, does it have to go back to Coastal Commission? If we change the red?
If you change anything in red, then yes.
And are there tiered processes? In other words, if we change a little, does that make it faster? If you change a lot, does that make it slower?
Any changes would result in us having to go back, talk with them, walk through what they are.
The same schedule.
And then we'd have to come back here. If they said no, to have that conversation with you, do you really want us to push it? Because then it has to go to City Council, and then City Council would have to agree that they want to push that item, and then we'd have to go to the Coastal Commission and push that item when it goes to hearing.
So that's a really good question, Asia, but...
Yeah, I agree. It's important to hear, that the Commission hear that and that the public hear it.
Others?
And given that, I just, Mike, for the record, state that I had not had the opportunity to fully review this, so my expectation would be to have more time. So, you know, I'd like my fellow commissioners to know that I'd like more time to review this because, especially because of that red line stuff.
I don't need, I don't need any more time. I've spent the last two weeks reviewing it.
And just for the record, that is the beauty of the spreadsheet, is because it saves you some of the effort of having to go through 450 pages.
Yeah.
And that it really itemizes what's exactly there.
And I didn't get to this.
I would state that if you're a Planning Commissioner, it's your job to be prepared for the meeting. I'm actually kind of pissed off. If you come asking for more time, I don't want to hear it next time. I want you to do the work.
I'm going to go past that real quick. The, the way that the red lines were done is actually easy to review. It's, I mean, it does take time, you have to go through it, but it's very, very clear. So, thank you. Other questions, points?
I have a couple just questions about things I didn't understand. There is something known as a safety factor when we were talking about the coastal setback requirements, which is on page 129. You probably don't need to look at page 129, but it states that, something about maintain a minimum safety factor of at least 1.5 for a minimum of 100 years. I'm just curious, what is the safety factor, and where do we find that information?
So it's a geotechnical engineering reference, and it really has to do with the stability of the slope. On these bluff properties, they're required to submit a geological report that evaluates soil and slope stability. And so that is communicating what is required to be, what the, what the geotech needs to include in the report.
It's common language for that.
It's common language, and other cities have the same sentence. Yeah.
Got it. Other, another one?
Mostly just a couple that... A couple that kind of tie together. I noticed there were some changes around parking and changes around density, I think, that where the states and the Coastal Commission kind of seemed to be at odds with one another, and how do you come to clarity on those where they were at differences with one another?
Right, so that's one of the areas that Scott and I specifically talked about with coastal staff. And we said, hey, the State Department of Housing has said, you know, we have a housing crisis, and we need to provide more housing. Like, we want to see, like, how, have you talked to HCD? And how is this looking in other cities' implementation plans? And they said, yes, that they have talked to the state, and that the legislation always includes a carve-out that says, there's always this, you know, trailing language that the legislation shall not be construed to lessen the effect of the coastal act. And the way that they have done this with other cities is that it's a coastal resource protection issue. So for example, if all of the homes on Beachcomber, every single one of them were to convert their garage to an ADU, as written, zoning code wouldn't require parking for any of those units. And so, for the Coastal Commission, that's a coastal, that's a coastal access impact, because now there would be no place for anyone, let alone like the homeowner and the ADU tenant to park, but now the public who's trying to access the beach. And so their initial response to the city was, is they were going to use Highway 1 as the dividing line, and said, everything west of Highway 1, if there's an ADU, they would have to provide parking for that ADU. And we said, well, that really doesn't reflect the various different neighborhoods, because there are some areas that it makes more sense to be closer to Highway 1. But there are other areas where you have, you know, like in the downtown area, there's less residential or there's less parking impacts, and so that line could be further to the west. And so, in 17.14, you see the new coastal parking boundary map, and the curvy line reflects that negotiation about, like, you know, what makes sense for More Obey.
It sounds a little bit like a ticket to a bar fight between two jurisdictions that we don't have any control over, and I'm just like, okay, I'm out.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it took some work to get it there, but they were, they were amenable to at least work with us and work through it, because this is, this is new for them too, because cities are now updating their LCPs, and so this issue is coming up. And so, this was, again, kind of a new thing for them as well, so they were open to talking through it with us.
We're just lucky Cal Fire wasn't also a part of the conversation. Would have added even more.
Understood. Other questions, Commissioners, before we go to public comment? What I'm thinking is, we have public comment, and then we did receive a couple of letters. We'll look at those. We've got those listed. So I would ask the public to, not to go through your letters if you don't have to, just emphasize the points that you would like to make clear and emphasize. Any other comments before we start? I'll open a public comment. Thank you all for staying here and being here late. And Bill?
Yeah, I was going to say, this is early for a typical meeting, no problem. Thanks again, Bill Martinie. Yeah, originally I came in because one of my real interests was a downtown height limit I mentioned earlier. And it was the last City Council, I think it was kind of the 11th hour on the 11th day, you know, it was their last meeting, that all of a sudden they increased the downtown height limit from 30 to 37 feet. And I think there might be an opportunity now to actually have future discussions and not lock in that 37-foot height limit. And so that was my main concern, is that the 37 height limit isn't in this new ordinance, and the public and the current council or current Planning Commission has an opportunity to, I think it's a downtown design, you know...
We're calling it the downtown design district.
Correct, yeah. And at that point, you know, the height could actually be discussed, what might be proper for the downtown.
Yeah, I think you were here at that hearing when...
Yes.
We made the last recommendation.
The other thing was, I was a little shocked that we're going from the setbacks that are currently in place, like when we were just talking about the motel, and now we're going to 000 setbacks, and I'm not sure where that came in. I didn't have the opportunity, or it's not my expertise, to read through 450 pages of, to me, kind of legalese. But I think maybe if that's something else, it might be, I don't know if it's locked in cement, or if that can be discussed and maybe made a little more...
I think we should talk about it. Do you have any further direction on that?
Only that I think it's a subject that if it was, the side setbacks that we currently have seem more than adequate and more user-friendly than what's proposing, being proposed on the 000, so...
Thank you for raising that.
Thanks, bye.
Others? Welcome, Terry.
Thank you. Terry Simons, More Obey. I've only got 50 seconds. You cut my time? That's okay. I don't really have a lot to say. 400 and something pages of the new zoning code with lots of blue and red bits and pieces all through it. It took me six hours to read through the entire document the first time, and about four hours to read through it the second time, and quite frankly, I still don't get it. What I'm most concerned about, albeit, all the minutia of all the different things and what it all means, is if I bring a project forward and I need to make a change in something for whatever reason, whether it's a height limit or a setback limit or whatever, how do we figure out whether we have to go back through the whole process with the Coastal Commission yet again on a site-by-site basis? Can we get local approval of that? And then if a local coastal plan is approved by the city, will it just be reviewed or appealed? Or are these changes going to be so comprehensive that when we make a change, we're locked into this zoning code in perpetuity? Because typically, we can make changes to our codes as we need them, as we go forward. And suddenly this, having both the housing authority of the state and the Coastal Commission's authority, is the Coastal Commission, which seems to be preempting everything these days. It takes a year plus to get a simple package of something through the Coastal Commission. It's shocking. And I just hope we're not, I hope we've got most of what we need to be able to do business as usual, such whatever that is, going forward, and we don't find ourselves in an endless loop of returning back to the Coastal Commission. Good luck. Thank you.
I think we can respond quickly to that, Scott. I do think it's important to say this for the public, that yes, the Coastal Commission has considerable influence, and so does state housing legislation, and that's reflected in the zoning code.
Yeah, we're required to comply with state law, we're required to comply with the Coastal Act. I think, you know, what Mr. Simons was saying, though, I think the scenario that we have right now, and Cindy explained this as part of her presentation, is the current entire zoning code is part of the city's coastal implementation plan, so any change we make to it has to go to Coastal Commission. Now, we've pulled a lot of that stuff out, and we retain the authority to make, you know, amendments to those sections without need to go in front of the Coastal Commission. Like, the entire sign code doesn't require...
That differentiation will make a difference.
Yeah, I think it'll, it allows us more flexibility, and it's, I mean, it's good for us, and it's good for the Coastal Commission, because they don't have to review as much of this stuff, you know? It was, it was kind of a win-win for both of us. At least that was the feeling with the interactions that we had with their staff.
Is that a common application right now? Is that a common application right now, the implementation plan?
Is that a common?
Are all new zoning codes doing that?
So when we were going through the update process, it was pointed out to us that Pacific Grove, a city that has about half the city in the coastal zone, had done this. They'd pulled out sections of it. They used to do that, the same thing we did. Whole zoning code was the IP. And then they pulled it out and they said, hey, you might want to consider this because Coastal realized that beneficial to us.
So it's not routine, though?
It's, I think they're starting to push it out now through communities that are going through the LCP update process.
It's very smart.
But it's, I think, early on. So we're probably one of the first adopters.
Got it. Others. Welcome, Betty.
Thank you, Betty Winholz. I won't go through my list because you asked me not to or asked us not to. But I do want to point out that the number one on my list, page 367, is the only red line thing that was blocked out that I would like put back in. And so my question for that, is that a coastal staff desire or is that something that Coastal Commission could allow us to put back in? The rest, I think, are questions of clarity or in a couple of cases of the city staff asking for things that I think not. But I would add a couple of things that aren't on this list, and that is, I appreciate Mr. Martini's comment about the zero setbacks and that I'm glad you're going to deal with that. I also know that there's, like with the appeal for Mr. Lor, we talked about workforce housing and there was things missing in our code that they needed to evaluate. So I think there's still some things missing that need to be put back in the code. And now's a good time to do that. And that would include this whole concept of workforce and what that means or if it needs to be defined. Because it's too nebulous. We don't know what that is.
You also, Betty, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you also mentioned the hotel definition.
Yeah, we've never gotten a definition of what an unhosed hotel is. And that, we use that a lot now. And there's been several projects that have been approved that way, but it's not in our code. So I would like to see things that we're doing in the code.
Thank you. Others. Ray, anybody in the queue with a hand raised?
Thank you. I see no raised hands, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ray. Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. You know, I've been here since yesterday about noon. And this morning I headed out at about 8:00. In fact, I saw the mayor at Albertson's to do my work for today's meeting. I ended up on Dog Beach mistakenly, I talked to you about this, Chair, because of some errors in the report. I ended up there for three to four hours, listening to residents, not talking to them, listening to them about their concerns about what was happening tonight. So that's where three or four of my hours went today. I'm sorry, my purpose was not to be neglectful, but I just feel that this is really important. Anything we send back to Coastal is going to have to be approved by council as well for a fight.
So I'm going to slow you down there. Hold it and we can always go back and visit that.
But I just want to clarify that I wasn't trying to neglect my time.
Okay, okay. So in terms of public comment, I think we're, I'm going to close public comment. Even though, if I want to engage, should I leave it open, Scott? I could do that, right?
Yeah, it's entirely up to the Commission. If you have questions about, you know...
Commissioners, if you don't have a problem, let's leave it open because there's some detail in these comments. Yeah. So let's dive in. Let's decide how we're going to do this. A lot of it is, I don't think, really discussable. So I think a lot of the red line, blue line stuff we can move through and maybe identify the bigger items. That would be one way to do it. And I do think that we've identified certain things that actually might be missing or want to be changed. And those are the setbacks, the zero setbacks need to be discussed and understood why they are the way they are. I think the height limit is something that we need to discuss as a commission for the downtown and see how we want to respond in our recommendation to council. The definitions that Betty mentioned are significant around workforce, which, again, we need to decide. And I'm going to ask staff to give us a reason why we need to work on that and the unhosed hotel. So those are the outlying pieces that I see. So commissioners, how do we want to go about this? Do you want to talk about the big issues first? Also, we might lose Asia. You're good? Okay.
There's some minor cleanup little things that we can take up at the end. I think they're really quick.
Why don't we do that? So why don't we work on the big issues first? Is everybody happy with that? Okay. Why don't we go right to the 37-foot thing?
Just wipe it.
So let me offer a little bit of direction. Cindy talked about it. The last time this went from us, we recommended against raising the 37 feet to council. Council elected not to follow that recommendation. It's back in our hands again. Since that time, we encouraged council to consider a downtown design district, which they have done and which is about to launch. We've had several steering committee meetings on the downtown design district. That's going to be a six-month effort to reconsider not only the height but incentives that could be considered with the height and to look at other issues that make those kinds of zoning changes effective. So this commission argued that by raising the height alone, that was ineffective. And not only a bad tool, but a blunt tool that actually wouldn't work. It's reasonable for us to consider to go back to that same recommendation with this submittal to council. Scott, do you have any opinion or suggestion on that?
So, yeah, so the Chair and I spoke about this earlier today. And it is certainly, you know, of interest both, I think, to many of the planning commissioners and to our council, at least some of our council members as well. Specifically to the ones that are on the downtown design district committee, for sure. And I think it is, given that the council provided direction to form a committee, a downtown design district committee, that is led by council members Landrum, who's in the audience this evening, and council member Edwards. So I think, you know, because the council gave that direction to form the committee and because I think the council had concerns about that increase in height. And even, in fact, it was added as a future agenda item at the council meeting where they made the change. So I think it is appropriate for the planning commission because you're a recommending body when it comes to this. You're not making the decision. You're making the recommendation to city council. If you do have concerns about that, and at least three of you have that concern, you'd like to remove it, we could certainly do that at your direction. That would be one of the recommendations that we could forward on to city council.
So I'd like to make that suggestion and ask for a knot of heads, that if we want to do that, that we'll put that as a consideration. When we make the motion, we can vote on it. But it would be to return to that neutral position of our last recommendation and then to depend on the work of the downtown design district and the council's further interpretation of how that might work.
Sorry, so the recommendation would be to eliminate the 37 feet from the code and put instead, nothing but...
To go back to the, back to the original.
Back to 30 feet.
So this is, in a sense, that's our data, right? The original. And we're looking at a lot of, you know, coastal commission changes, clarifications. But there are certain other things that we're actually changing or might change. This is to go back to where it was.
And I can show you a slide of what the edit would look like to the document if the commission would like to see that.
Commissioners, Joe?
I would just like that because it's such a noteworthy suggestion, I would really wish that the decision would be unanimous. And so if there is any disagreement, we should investigate that now before we take a vote.
I love it. What's your chance to comment? Let's go around the room. Let's start with you, Joe.
I am absolutely in favor. I think the 37-foot maximum right now is both imprudent and I would even characterize it as dangerous. A whole variety of approaches, yeah.
That's a serious comment. Thank you. Asia?
I'm actually not in favor of eliminating it, but I would love to see it qualified. So the 37 feet, there's a lot of variability. We've talked about before. There's incentives that might allow that to be higher than 37 feet. There's a lot of different things that can happen within 37 feet. And so I, maybe I would like to eliminate the bluntness of the 37 feet, but I would actually like to see the height remain with qualifications. And I know that's what the design district is getting at, but...
It's going to do, yeah.
We, I guess I just want to see some tool of some kind that can assure some balance.
So...
And I'm not totally convinced that the design district...
Do you want us to try to convince you? Or, because this was your original vote, was a no?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Joe?
Yeah, I may have misspoke in that I don't want to create the impression that I am opposed to a 37-foot height maximum. I am opposed to a one-size-fits-all, large area of the downtown, the absence of any kind of small experimental approach or the absence of qualifications. Yes, you might have 37 feet if there is affordable housing. Yes, you might have 37 feet if we don't allow two...
Exactly, yeah. And so it has to be bundled. That's why it becomes a more precise tool if it's bundled with incentives.
I guess I just, like, this is the same discussion we had originally. Like, originally I was saying the same thing. I think 37 or some increased height should be codified.
That's what the design district will do. And so the effort to get there, you can't do it until you have that kind of study.
Sure. So I guess I'm not, I don't have a clear understanding of how this committee is going to reach that goal of codification.
So this is, I know, maybe Scott and I can give you a quick snapshot. This is like a, the downtown design district comes with specific plan implementations, guidelines, incentives, opportunities. And what that does is it looks at it in a complete way with the hope that not only do we create something that fits Morro Bay, but we also create something that will actually work to incentivize development.
So does that look like another amendment to zoning code? Does that look like additional legislation?
That's a good, that's a good question, Commissioner King. So, yeah, so if this evening the direction was, you know, to recommend deletion of the 37-foot, and then the design, downtown design district, 3Ds, were to come up with a policy to implement, to put it back in in certain circumstances, whatever those might be, through incentives for affordable housing, as suggested by Commissioner Graffia and things along those lines, then it would have to come back. And it would have to come back through planning commission because it is your job to make recommendations on changes to the zoning code to the city council. And then it would go from planning commission to city council. So you would get to review that policy. You would get to make recommendations to changes if you wanted to. And then you would get to recommend whatever that is, might come out of that effort to city council in the end.
So let's say the downtown design district makes a recommendation. Who does that go to first?
So it is a city council committee. So the city council will decide what they want to do with whatever comes out of the downtown design district. The city council, you know, committee members could simply decide that they don't think it's appropriate. They'd probably do a report back to the full council to inform them of, you know, what came out of the effort and could say, we don't think this is worthwhile to move forward. The full council would probably give some direction, either yea, nay, do something else. And it would be up to them whether they move it forward and say, yes, continue to the planning commission to review it and go through the normal process.
Got it.
So my concern is that the design, or the design committee comes up with something and then it's not favorable, like the planning commission doesn't get another say in it. Just two commissioners get a say in it.
Well, no.
Any policy that comes out of it is likely to be a zoning code policy that has to be reviewed by the planning commission.
Or it could be, it could result in just maintaining 30 feet.
Correct. That could be the result of the committee effort. That's what I was saying is, it'll, you know, the council committee members will be the one that makes the decision where it goes. My take is, they got direction from the full council to do it. So they'll go back to the full council and present whatever it is they present that came out of that effort. And then they'll have, well, some direction that comes out of that. Either that would be pursue a policy that we did, but we developed, or we think 30 foot's it and we don't want to do, we don't think this is a good idea. And then the council would vote on whether to, what to do with that.
That would be a bad job, but it could happen. Yeah. Mike?
Yeah, and I'll take the same position I took before, which was, you know, get rid of it. But again, I want to reiterate what Commissioner King's saying, that there's going to be state laws that roll down from Sacramento that requires or give us incentives, money or actually punish us for not doing things. That's where we're at now. They're taking parking lots in certain parts of the state and making housing out of them because they want to eliminate the parking and create housing. And if you don't do it, you're punished or you can get incentives for doing it. All I'm saying is, this creates a neutral position where in the process of...
When you say this, you mean the downtown design district?
No, no, the height. What I'm saying is, in the process of doing your job, something may happen that lets you or incentivizes you or actually punishes you for not doing something a certain way because of what's coming out of Sacramento. So, you know, it's a good position to be in so that you can be more flexible.
Got it.
For housing, especially for housing.
Eric?
First of all, thank you for all the work. This is a huge document and quite a lot to absorb. And I think the public actually in situations like this sees such a big document that don't even know how to respond. And so by taking height off the table, so to speak, and putting the height into, and setbacks, I hope, into a discussion around the downtown master plan, downtown design district, rather, it gives an opportunity to the public to participate in a way that I don't think they've been really cognizant that they can. And so for that reason, and also I presume that those members of the committee will be taking into account whatever laws come down from the state in the next few months and the beginning of the year typically, along with all the laws that have been passed. Those all, it all is, it's just, you know, we call it sausage making. And you have to look at everything to get to the best answer. And this is a way to look at everything. And it also involves the community as most, as much as we can, because anything that does get decided upon then comes back through the planning commission and goes back through council. And the community can really tell us what they want. And at this point in time, the community is telling me that this subject shouldn't be decided now. This subject could be decided through this development of this, the downtown design district.
I just feel like what have the last couple of years of like the general plan and going through all this huge process been, if not opportunity to contribute to the conversation? And so, yeah, this is really hard for me because we're actually just adding more and more and more time onto more process and more time onto potential, I guess.
It's okay to feel the way you feel. That's why there's a group of five. Everybody, you don't need to agree. You should absolutely stand your ground on whatever you feel.
And I might just reiterate, with the map for which the 37-foot maximum is now relevant, is a very large swath of downtown Morro Bay. And once the planning commission approves this zoning code, then by right, anyone who has owns or has purchased, purchases after that date, will have a right to go to 37 feet without any considerations for some of the qualifications that we might like to put onto it. And that's why I said it's imprudent because we really should take some time to see what it is we would like to do with this additional footage in terms of the maximum. And it's, it will not be available to us unless we go back to 30 feet now.
And if I could tag on to Joe's thing, and Asia, I don't know if this will help, but specific plans like this are common in cities. This is how you design a good neighborhood or a good downtown. And one of the reasons you do it is... And one of the reasons you do it is, as Eric suggested, is to hear from the community, to bring in their input. But it's also to make it work for a developer. And it's also to balance it in a way that it's implementable and it actually encourages what you want. That's going to take time. The time that we've done is we're trying to expedite the Downtown Design District. We've set it up so it's six months of meetings. It includes six meetings with the committee, two public meetings, and then a summation. And once those recommendations are out, I do feel that's pretty fast for something like this, that at least then I think we'll have a sense of where it's going to go. I would be shocked if we came out with nothing after all, all this effort. So I, I guess, I would encourage you that the, the effort is a legitimate one, and it is one that I think will, we will hopefully get community support too. So that might not change your vote, but at least maybe it's good to get it in the public record.
Mr. Chair, I have one final comment on that. The, the typology of the buildings that come out of height without further specificity, given the state's guidelines, essentially projects which meet the guidelines is where, let's say, 10%, affordable, 10% doesn't mean 10% of the building. It means 10% of the doors in the building. And so if you have 100 units, 10 of them are low income, and those 10 typically are studios, and they're typically in the north corner of the building by the trash cans. And the, and the other 90 represent the top floor and the second to the top floor. And, and so what, what happens is you get these giant buildings, which are not really affordable housing, they're just giant buildings with expensive condos on top, and a couple, those are three bedrooms, because each door is, is a unit. And so a single studio or a three-bedroom is, is a door. So 10% isn't what you might think it's going to be. And so what we can do within the constraints of the Downtown Design District is specify that if you're going to go high, you have to go to X number of square feet or X number of percentage of the total building. We can further constrain such that we actually create affordable housing. That's, that's the intent I'm hoping for, because I can't stand some of the typologies I see in Santa Monica or even in San Luis, Santa Barbara, because the developers are able to twist the rules to a degree that, I'll leave it at that.
So I think enough said on this topic. And we've got four nods. One...
Hold on.
Uh-uh. And so, good. You know, the other big issue that I'm worried about, Scott, can you talk about like the zoning, the setback issue?
So the setback issue that was raised today, I mean, if it's something that you, you want to take under consideration for a change, that would be something that you would make a recommendation to, to the City Council, like, we need to take it up? I think, I mean, my hope is to get out of this process in, in two meetings to get this moving. We have a bunch of, we have some, I'll give you the background here. We have projects because of Coastal sort of 180 on us. They said, "We're ready, submit, we're ready to go." And then we submitted, and they weren't ready to go, and they gave us edits, right? We have projects that are stuck in limbo. They're designed consistent with the new code, but we can't use it.
Right.
So I would think that, you know, something along the lines of changing setbacks in an area, like, remember, we had multiple General Plan Advisory Committee meetings, they reviewed the zoning code too, and, and multiple Planning Commission meetings where these things were discussed, and there was a lot of discussion about them, and they were purposely put the way that they are now. I, I would be reluctant if we were going to spend several meetings going over this to include this in this edit, as opposed to maybe saying, "Hey, this is something we want to look at," and then maybe teeing it up for the, like, you know, spring of next year.
So let's talk about the problem and see what it might take. Cindy?
Can, I just wanted to talk about the setbacks just from the, for context. And the reason why we see the zero-foot setback is the previous zoning code did not have a floor-area ratio requirement for commercial development. It was only driven by setbacks and law coverage. And Scott can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is a state requirement that you have a floor-area ratio requirement on commercial. Is that correct? Yeah?
Yeah, the law changed a couple of years ago.
And so, and so the idea was, is that, yes, it's, it was shown as a zero-foot setback to provide that flexibility for that commercial development, because that floor-area ratio requirement is, was going to drive how that looked on the lot, and then taking into account the other standards.
Got it.
And you still have other development standards that you can apply, and requirements related to like landscaping was one of the conversations today for projects. So you still have other tools in the zoning code? Much, much more tools in the new zoning code than you had in the old one?
Well, just talk about that for a second. Like, if we use the project we just reviewed, it's very nice that there's landscaping there. It really does help. And if they had built that with a zero setback, I think it would have been imposing on the street. And that's very different than what you might get on, you know, the Boulevard or on Main Street, where a zero setback makes great sense.
Which is where this zoning is the same. So you have these two types of areas in town that have the same zoning. So it's why there are other...
I guess that's the question, right? Like, is that, is that a good thing? And I'm just looking at the one thing, which is landscape.
And that's part of what would come to the commission, because this would require a design review approval by the Planning Commission.
Yeah, but how can we change setbacks?
The, the design review piece gives you great discretionary authority, and there's landscape requirements in the code that would allow you to say, "Hey, in this area, it's not appropriate to have the zero setback right here, right up against the street," versus maybe on where would be more appropriate, say, More Bay Boulevard and/or Main Street, between More Bay Boulevard and Beach, as an example.
Oftentimes, we're met with, where we're talking about something that is 30 feet and it meets the height limit, and so we're reticent to say, "Well, you should only be 26 feet just because." And I think the same issue may apply here, where if someone says, "Well, he says zero setback," and you're now, you're twisting the rules to make us do X, and I hesitate to, to start that.
Yeah, I mean, you provided direction today to the, to the commission to redo...
Right now, I'm trying to explore, right? And Eric just expressed concern, I have concerns, you know, Bill raised the issue, Joe raised the issue.
And I, I agree with, with Eric in that the code should also make an effort to set some expectations with the applicant. And for that expectation to exist, he should be able to see something about what would be the appropriate...
Yes.
I'm mostly concerned about corner lots.
Okay, here, let me keep, keep control, just for a second, Eric. So if we're going to try to, we don't want to set this back six months. How can we look at this authentically and say, "Maybe we need a differentiation between the Boulevard and Main Street and the secondary blocks?"
Yeah, well, I think part of this is, like, we would have to go through all of the things that are the other tools in the document that I was talking about, right? Because we added several of these things. And, and they were because the Planning Commission, I think Commissioner Meyer is right, like, sometimes the Planning Commission is reticent to make changes if it's not based in something that's in the code. So we said, "We see that, and we're going to fix that. We're going to put these tools into the code that allow you to make those calls, so you don't have to feel reticent about it. You can say, 'No, it's founded in this policy here, or this design review, or it's founded in this other policy that's in there, it just depends.'" So back to your question, I'm, I'm happy to work on like anything that you guys are interested in moving forward. I just, I think it takes time to do that. And so that's my concern, is this is, the document's mostly ready to go now. And I think if we have, we have a list of things that we can incorporate, it changes in here that are fairly minor, that we could get through pretty quickly, that's great. This seems to me to be...
This is bigger.
I agree. And I think it requires more thought. And I think that's something that we would put forward to the City Council. Like, we would like to take a look at this. We would like a process where we could take a look at the setbacks in the, in this zoning class.
So that's what I'm trying to get to. If we were to figure, let's say we all have real concern about this. And I'm not saying we want to solve it tonight, or that we'll even resolve it in one more meeting. But let's say we want to get the zoning code out. How can we qualify this?
Yeah, I think there's two, I think there's a, I think what we're doing is, we're coming up, we'll have a list of things that we're going to change. Height, we have that edit, because you already told us to do that previously, so we, we have that ready-made, we can do that. You know, typo-type stuff, small changes, you know, are pretty easy for us to make, be pretty nimble there. Bigger changes, a little bit harder. I would say we have a list of bigger changes that we move forward, like, in the next six months. Like, we start working on it, and then we bundle those up, because we're, we're going to have a, we do the report to the state on status on the general plan, implementation in April, I think. And so that would be a good timeframe where we could, you know, we could, by that, as part of that conversation, we move forward amendments, you know, that we've been looking at.
So if we do this by the amendment process, that means if someone comes in with a project right now on like the site we saw tonight, they could do a zero setback building, except for those tools that you're talking about, which have me a little uncertain.
Yeah.
Where I go in and I have to tell them as a commissioner, "I want five feet for landscape."
Yeah.
So that's what, in other words, that would be the risk?
It, it would be, and remember, we're at, we have to go through our entire process, right? We have to go through Planning Commission whenever we get done here, then we go to City Council. That's a minimum two meetings. City Council has to do, because it's an ordinance. And then we have to send it to Coastal, and they have to do the certification process. So this can all be going on right now while we're doing that and move things forward. So I mean, it's, you know, I don't know that there's a huge gap between when we could have something back in front of them and when they would have it done, so.
So I'm not sure we've got a clear path. Here, Joe's first.
What if it's an interim solution before an amendment? Should we decide on amendment? What if we, what if we, in the provisions that talk about setback, we footnote it, drawing the attention to the specific other kinds of, I'll call them safeguards, and explicitly say, "And these may, and these may serve as constraints..."
As an interim measure. But did you hear that, Scott?
I didn't, I was turning the...
Could you do it again, Joe?
I was suggesting that perhaps we put several footnotes in the setback provision, which then take the, the applicant to those provisions that could work as a constraint against zero setback. So there are, so they have notice that...
You're pointing, essentially, from, if you do this, then blah, blah, blah.
So it would prevent them from being able to argue, "We knew nothing about this. This comes as a complete surprise. We, we shouldn't even have to consider that."
So what do you think, Scott?
Certainly, we could take a look at that between now and the next meeting and come back with you with what that might look like.
So what I'm trying to do is get a structure for tonight, where we might need a second meeting, which Mike would appreciate.
Yeah.
And we would, because of this, we would need language around how, how to do that?
So, so I think, I mean, if you're, if you're in agreement, I mean, I think adding cross-referencing to other policy sections in the code is not an issue. We have many of them. So I, I don't, I think that's a reasonable request. I think, and so I'd happy to look, I don't, off my, top of my head right now, I don't know exactly what that looks like, so I want to go figure that out. And I already, sort of, we already internally planned on this being at least two meetings in front of, with you guys.
When would meeting two be?
October 3rd.
We were expecting we'd come back to the very next meeting.
Oh, at the next meeting?
Yeah, October 3rd. Right, October...
Could we still do that with all that we're talking about?
Well, I think so. I think the, the issue that's going to be this evening is we're probably not going to get through everything to give us all that direction. So you might come up with some other things that require a third meeting, I guess, I don't know.
Well, no. I'm trying to say, right now, like Eric, I read it, and I think most of the commissioners did, we're ready to act.
Okay.
And I think the, the things that I'm concerned about are, you know, I think we've, I think we're at a place where we're comfortable with the height. I'm just worried about the setback issue. It seems major to me. And so, you know, if this commission, we can shake heads. If we like the idea of Joe's suggestion, let's target that for meeting number two, where we see the stuff.
Yeah, we can do that.
And is, is there any maps that show this kind of, have we ever done it graphically, the setback stuff?
On existing lots, or what are you saying? Well, I guess we, I guess it's probably, it's probably more, I said, we can, I don't know...
I'm trying to see how to get a general picture of the, of the impact to the fabric.
Okay. Well, I guess one would be to show you the zoning map where this takes place, because it is down More Bay Boulevard and it is down Main Street.
So could we, we can do that pretty simply for the next meeting? Or you have a zoning map and we just identify the lots that we're hearing concern about?
Yes. I think, I don't know, I think we can definitely do that. We can bring a couple of examples, maybe we'll do some, we'll actually go out there and take some, we'll use the aerials and maybe we'll go take a couple of pictures to, give a couple, like, of examples, maybe for you.
Okay, commissioners?
Okay, we can do that.
Commissioners, what other items you want to take on next?
I'm down to housekeeping stuff, mostly.
How about the definition of unhosted hotels and workforce?
And also, I think, STR, is that part of our, short-term rentals, part of our...
That's part of the housekeeping?
The definition's in the code of STR, it's in the code.
Yes, I'm for adding those two definitions.
Okay, let's try to do workforce pretty quick. I'll, I'll start in the sense that I'm not sure how important it is to us to have a definition of workforce, but I'd like to hear from staff. In other places that I've been, it's not always that useful. Is it useful here? Do we need to include that in the zoning code? And can I start with Cindy and Scott?
I think the reason that we don't have workforce housing in this zoning code is because we don't have like a workforce ordinance, if you will. Generally, zoning codes have definitions to refer to things that are discussed in the zoning code. And since there's no, like, specific provision for workforce in the same manner that there is for, say, like ADUs or signs, like, you would define it that way. And so generally, when you have external terms, they're not included in the zoning code.
So help me...
That's laundry.
Are you thinking workforce housing, or are you thinking...
Yeah. I mean, we just had a project that called it workforce, and it was unclear...
We have a definition for workforce housing in the code.
Is it in the zoning code?
Correct.
It was live-work.
Oh, live-work, not workforce housing. I'm sorry, live-work, thank you.
Thank you. Live-work. We do not have a definition of that in the code.
It's live-work because it's the combination of...
Yeah.
If you're going to do a live-work, you also want to do work-live in your definitions, because those two are confusing to a lot of people.
So abstractly, I'm not trying to solve it again tonight. Is this important enough to the commissioners that we want to pursue that as part of, and can we get something by the next meeting, Scott? In, in other words, when I say something, just your advice and direction, that we either postpone it or...
So I guess, I mean, I guess let's, let's, let's talk about this for a second.
Yeah, please.
So, I mean, we had a project that, you know, identified live-work as two of the units in the project. So some people raised, like, what's the definition of that? And I'm not so concerned about it, because I know what uses are allowed in the zones, and that's what I use. I don't know that we have a whole lot of these things, but if you think there's utility in it, then I'm certainly happy to go research a little bit and, and find some definitions for you to consider, we could add in.
I think we're asking for clarity. When it came last meeting, it was awkward, because it was, there was questions from the public, and I didn't think we answered it well.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's commercial space that's shared, you know, we didn't have a parking standard for it, as an example, so we had to go look that up. But there's all kinds of things we don't have parking standards for in the code, and it just says, "We have the ability to make those decisions internally or at the Planning Commission level," those types of things. So we could come up with a definition and bring it to you, and you could consider it if you wanted to. And if you're like, "Man, we don't like this," then you could just decide not to do it. I mean, it's up to you.
Well, and a definition, but I'm also interested in why does someone do it? What's the advantages? If we want this to happen, are we encouraging it, or...
Yeah, I mean, clearly, clearly, it's not, there's no rush to do this. This was actually something that was much more, you know, prominent, I want to say, back before the recession, you know, in the, in the, you know, late 2000s.
That's, that's my experience.
Yeah, I had multiple projects back when I was in Pismo Beach, actually, then, that had a live-work component to it. And then after the recession, they got rid of all that stuff. They said, "These are weird things, that's a weird market," and they, and they never came back.
So commissioners, do we want to try, can you come back to us with an explanation prepared for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think...
And at that point, we can decide where we need to go? Eric?
There's just terms which are wonky, and I know we may know what they mean, or we may have various interpretations of them. I think the public really has no idea in some cases, like workforce housing, as brought up by Betty earlier. Workforce housing is a confusing term to many people in my experience over the years. And I think that defining what that is according to whatever definition comes down from HUD or comes down, I don't know who actually might be the defining person that says what workforce, it's a certain salary range of a certain group in every, in every community, it's different, every county anyway, it's different.
Percentage of county area median income.
Because many people say, well, I'm in the workforce, therefore it's workforce housing, and that's not true. It's a specific thing, and I think we should define that term.
How about this, how about next meeting, we have a session on live-work and workforce housing Scott, where you give us...
We have the definition of workforce housing in the, in the code, you guys...
So can we talk about it next meeting? Give us five minutes and we'll...
I don't need to talk about it if it's in the code, the point is, I just want to make sure, if it's, if it's not in the definitions, it's, it's in, I'm just trying to get into more, just so the public is aware of what it is.
It is in the definitions of the, of the new zoning code.
Okay, then I'm...
But live-work is not, I guess...
We don't have, we don't have live-work or work-live.
All right, so that's not a big one. Let's try to do that in the next meeting. The unhosted hotel definition, this is something, again, that we've seen two or three times in the past...
So why would we be getting a definition for this versus just a regular hotel?
I expressed a concern that a unhosted hotel could substitute for an apartment, as I recall, and that would evade certain restrictions that are in place for apartments. And I'm trying to recall what, what my concern at the time was. One of them, Joe, was signage. No, no, I don't, no, I don't believe, I...
Remember, there's a big building on the corner and there's no signage, and it's a hotel.
Oh, no, I now remember, I now remember. It was the possibility of converting a multi, an apartment building into an unhosted hotel, which would have the same effect as a short-term vacation rental. That was my concern, it would be a way of evading, if you will, short-term vacation restrictions by, you know, transforming an apartment into a hotel. And which brings me to the point about live-work. We were really, we're really concerned about abuses to the concept, so it's, it's more important to sort of find out if there are abuses and then fabricate a definition in such a way that it would avoid the abuses. So I have a feeling that the first thing we need to do is educate ourselves as to how things can be abused.
I don't want to over-say these things are necessarily important, so I certainly don't want to slow down the plan over this effort. But if we can bring some clarity to it, that's a good thing.
And Chair, I don't believe we had, or we have, in a hotel currently in Morro Bay that's not, that doesn't have signage, is that true or false? I believe that was part of, you know, in other words, I don't believe we do. And we were going to have one, we were actually going to grant that, and that would start the process of having buildings that aren't marked and signed and everything else. We can go down that route, I'm just saying that, that's what I meant by signage. I don't believe we have one yet. We almost did it, we almost did it. Is that true?
Interestingly enough, that project's coming, will be coming back before you.
Here we go. Without a sign?
Maybe at the next meeting.
No, we said you have to have a sign.
Yeah, no, I think it's coming back as they're changing the design, I just note that that's...
So we, all I'm saying is that we haven't clearly...
So, we're giving Scott direction for the next meeting, do we know what we're, do you know what we're asking?
So for the, I'm good on live-work.
Okay.
The unhosted hotel thing, I don't have really direction from you guys on it. If you guys want me to come back with a definition, I'll go try to find one. I, I don't know that I'm going to be able to do what Commissioner and Gaffia requested and then go find what impact those might have. Like that's, 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 like our staff report's going to be, you know, due next week, so...
I really wasn't expecting, I was, I was thinking that would be a discussion that we, we have to generate.
And the short-term rental ordinance restricts the number of units in an apartment building that can be a short-term rental, so you wouldn't see, you know, an eightplex, for example, that suddenly becomes, you know, all short-term rentals, just because of the limitations in that ordinance.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reluctant to dwell too much on this, I don't want to inspire somebody to do this, but I, you know, a six-unit apartment building...
Then that, and that becomes a, that becomes a hotel and it's a commercial use and it's, and it's subject to, you know, discretionary review that requires a business license application, there's, there's all of that city process, it, it, it may or may not trigger parking requirements, I mean that...
So how about we do this so we don't keep, you know, because what you're saying makes great sense to me, can we just put this on the agenda for the next meeting and you can come back and you can kind of give us why we don't need a definition? That would be fine.
Yeah, okay, that sounds good.
You want to do housekeeping and see how far we get? It's nine o'clock, how late do we want to stay? Can we do another half hour anyway?
Were we looking to go through the spreadsheet tonight?
No, I was going to go through, I've gone through my list, I've got Betty's list, I wanted to go through that, and you had a list?
I only have two points now.
Why don't you do your two?
And I've brought them up with, with staff separately. One was a figure on page 28, 17.02, .030.
Here's, go again, what page?
Page 28. It's essentially a, a figure that shows the bottom measurement of a deck height being measured from not the bottom of the deck post, but several feet down the hill, whereas in other locations in the document, for instance, page 161, the deck height is measured from the bottom of the post, and all I'm asking is that those two be consistent with one another such that we're measuring the deck height from the bottom of the post.
Cindy, you good?
I think Cindy, we, she gets that.
Right, yeah, yeah, we discussed that.
Okay.
That is a discrepancy in the, in the figure and it's, you know, in situations like this, had it not been caught, the text would prevail.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Then the, the second one is, is one of the items in, in the spreadsheet, if you want to defer to the spreadsheet later, although I can bring it up now, it's essentially around, it's item 40 in the spreadsheet, which is talking about lighting.
What page, you know what page it is?
Sorry, I don't know the...
Okay.
Basically, they're referring to following lead for light intensity and color temperature and everything, and lead is really an energy document and not a color temperature or lumens calculation, and my suggestion is that we create something that more carefully controls, you don't want bright blue LED, you know, light, you want, if it's going to be LED, you want lower, lower temperatures, 27K or 2700K, I mean, or 3000K, not 6000, not daylight. And then also, the intensity should be defined in lumens, the amount of light being produced by those bulbs, rather than just deferring to lead, which doesn't even concern that subject. It should, it should be discussed, and I'm not saying I know how to discuss it, but someone does, and maybe that's something we do in an update. I'm going to leave that open to discussion.
Cindy, you good with that? Do you need more direction, or is that...
So I guess I, I would want to know, so the commission would reject the proposed edit and not use lead, or, or how would you want to see that edit changed?
You would need more than lead, is what you're saying Eric?
Correct. I'm talking about basically adding in something, and it doesn't have to be right now, because I don't want to defer the document, there's too many projects waiting, but I do want to control it in Morro Bay's future, such that our lighting is something we can control more carefully. Dark sky ordinance does some, or dark sky, I don't know the terminology, does, does, does essentially control the lumens to a degree, but I think we can get more specificity, which would be helpful, so you don't have these lights that are like the wrong color, which maybe I'm a nerd, I don't know.
Is that doable?
Uh huh.
Okay. Anything else Eric, or are we...
No, that's my big points.
Let me go through, I want to take you through Betty's list real quick. She talked about no restrictions on ADUs. Betty, do you want to come up on these, so you can help us out?
You were talking about the...
What, what number are you on?
I didn't see that, I heard...
Page 278. Or maybe that was mine.
That's not Betty's.
Was it about parking, ADUs and parking?
Yeah.
So there's, if, this was one of my concerns as well, I think.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
There was two sections that discussed ADUs and parking, I think that the coastal commission, right, they decided anything west of that boundary, different parking standards were set that the rest of the city, so we don't have control over that really.
Right, right.
And then parking for ADUs out east of that boundary are set by state law.
Correct.
Is that what you were mentioning? I just wanted to clarify to see if we had any influence over west of that line, but it doesn't sound like we do.
I mean, they, they originally proposed a more easterly line and, yeah, so this reflects the compromise.
I wanted clarity on page 350, where, and I talked to Scott about this earlier, I wanted it, just to be clear for the commissioners and the public, that the way our review stands, and Scott, you might want to explain this, at a thousand, the 1,000 square feet or two-story, that became a threshold for...
Oh, for, for review of, for requiring a discretionary permit. So, right now, if you have a compliant project and you're proposing an addition and it doesn't, and you have a conforming house and it's a conforming addition, you can simply just go get a building permit for it. We, we provided some additional caveats in that, in the review of single-family homes, that anything over 2,500 square feet would go to planning commission. Anything that's under 2,500 square feet is an addition of 1,000 square foot or more would, conforming, but under 2,500 square foot total would be reviewed through discretionary or staff-level permit process. And anything two stories, it's an addition, would also be a staff-level permit, meaning you couldn't just go get your building permit.
And this is actually more restrictive than the previous code?
Yeah, because you could just go get a building permit on the, on the current, previous code, current code.
Okay, so I think I'm good with that. Page 367.
So I'm familiar with this one, I can, I can address this question.
Please.
So this is a section that coastal commission wanted deleted, and it, and it, it's standard language that lots of cities have in their LCPs, and it refers to mapped sensitive resource areas. And when we got it back from coastal commission, we said, why would you want to delete this? I think that must be an error. And interesting background to this, when the coastal act was passed in 1976, this was included as part of the statute language. The state never mapped those sensitive resource areas. And so it's kind of like a dangling thing, and they do not want to have dead-end references in LCPs that refer to things that don't exist. It wasn't mapped, and, and they don't intend to map it, and so they, it's a cleanup thing by them to remove that.
And we do have mapped like ESHA and stuff...
Which is different.
In our code, yeah.
This is an explanation on page 281, talks about STRs and a 30-day minimum rental. I think the question was just to make sure that we're not making short-term rentals anymore, we're not changing the short-term rental policy, and this is still consistent with what we have in place.
We didn't make, yeah, we didn't make changes to it, yeah.
All right. Betty asked about driveway lengths that vary with, from a 20-foot with the exceptions around RSA. Yeah, can you just talk to that one Cindy?
So this was an inadvertent typo when we were working with the consultant, when we had the very earliest iteration of the zoning code, we had multiple districts, we had an RSA, and RSB, and RSC, and they all varied depending on lot size. When we went to the final version of the draft zoning code, that didn't get edited to correct the actual names of the final zone districts. It's very similar to how in our current, or 95 zoning code, you know, we have an S1 overlay, we have an S2 overlay. Those overlays relax development standards because they acknowledge that a 2,400 square foot lot should have a different driveway length than say a 6,000 square foot lot. In the new zoning code, we have RSA and we have RSB, and so this is really just kind of correcting what the...
It's the translation of...
Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly.
I think the worry is that a car is longer than 10 feet, and so the car will be occupying a driveway and extending out whatever extra length out into the right-of-way, and I think, I think that's really the concern. Any thoughts?
Yeah, well, and we have that driveway length standard now in the S1 overlay, they're only required to have a 10-foot driveway setback. They, the code also requires automatic garage door opener, some other standards, but it really is to permit development of that lot, because when you are a lot that's 24, 2,500 square feet, it really becomes a developmental burden for, to comply with that standard of that longer driveway length, so it's really no change.
The developer's not getting credit for that 10 feet as a parking space because it's not a legal space.
No, right, no, that is, that's just the driveway, and essentially what's, what that's going to look like is the required, I mean, they're still required to have onsite parking that's out of the setback area, it's just, that driveway, you can't park in it, so you'd still have to park either in your garage or in your open and uncovered place.
So we're good?
Yeah.
Betty asked about on page 194, transit access and reduced parking.
Yeah, so we discussed this with the coastal commission, and the, I'm pulling up this page here, this was language that they wanted added in regards to like avoiding any impacts with coastal act. And while the city doesn't have a major transit hub as defined by AB 2097, we may in the future, and because this is one of the IP chapters, it's more prudent to leave it in because it puts people on notice for this requirement.
I think, I think I'm good with that. Page 169, there's four incentives around parking, which I think that's not an option to change.
Hold on a second here.
Page 169.
2D.
Oh, is this regard, in the section regarding developer incentives? I don't see this as a highlighted...
It's under parking, under parking?
I think it's developer incentives.
It's developer incentives.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is, the four incentives, yes.
Yes, this is, this is state law, and this is...
It's state law, right? So this is an example, a public example of something we can't, we have no control, no, no input.
Right, right.
It's state density bonus law.
Yeah.
Once, page 168, Betty asked about college student housing.
Right, yeah, so same thing, we don't have any developments that expressly college student housing, doesn't mean that we won't in the future. It's, it's, it's a category of housing, if someone wanted to propose, propose that, and it just related to state law.
151, I thought this was a good question too. What is a zoning clearance?
So zoning clearance really kind of puts, codifies, puts into the zoning code the practice that staff already does. When projects that wouldn't otherwise require a discretionary review, require some type of clearance depending on what the, the provision is in the zoning code. It's confirming that it conforms with the zoning code. Sometimes, even in our current, pre, previous zoning code, we would get requests for zoning code research, or I have a non-conforming home and my bank is requiring a zoning conformance letter. It's a way to identify that staff has given you that clearance.
So that, two-foot, it's a two-foot adjustment, right? That's, that's just at the discretion of staff?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you justify it by way of security, or...
Yeah, even, there a particular situation, yeah. I want it isn't good enough.
Page 121, scenic areas. Why was that eliminated? Oh, I did the wrong one, okay.
The intent is to make it more broadly applicable across the...
Oh, why, yes, right.
I'm sorry, where are you?
On page 121, on 1714-090A.
Specific, site-specific visual analysis.
Okay.
It says within scenic areas.
I'm not seeing anything in red under 1740-090.
No, Betty, you're thinking it limits it?
To eliminate those three words, it's in, it's in black and white. But that's a, it's, then...
Mike, Mike?
I apologize.
Sorry, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So if you, are you at 1714? 090A? Is this the first sentence of paragraph A? The following documentation and requirements shall be provided for all CDP applications within scenic areas. Within, and if, I thought if we took out the words "within scenic areas", it would more broadly apply. Like, it shouldn't just be about scenic areas.
Are scenic areas defined?
In the, in the land use plan.
Yes.
Yes.
So they're actually graphically limited?
Yeah.
Yes.
Why, is it just scenic areas? Do you guys have a rationale?
I'd have to go back through the history of the zoning code. There are many edits that relate to this section, numerous edits related to this section, to go back and look at the context. I don't, off the top of my head, recall. I mean, Cindy, do you?
I don't recall, but I know that this section was heavily reviewed by coastal commission. I'd have to look at earlier iterations.
Yeah, there's a, there's, there's lots of edits here.
Could you put that on your list and just get back to us at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Page 102. Moderate, is that a state requirement?
Yes, so that is part of the low-cost visitor-serving accommodations. We had lots and lots of back and forth on that.
So that's state language.
That's state language and they, that's, that's, that's a hard, that's a hard thing for them, like.
Page 98, no local public hearing is required around ADUs.
Right, that's state law.
Yeah.
State law. We took care of the height. Oh, Betty had a clerical thing about headings carrying from page to page. Did you see that? She pointed to page 45, 46.
Yeah, and that, that's really a, I guess like a professional standard on how the, you know, the publishing of a document is put together when it's in a paper format. It's really meant to be consumed electronically and just in terms of balancing the graphics, that's, that's a design feature.
Hard to.
As I reviewed it, I really specifically looked at that online. And when you look at it online, it's not an issue at all.
Yeah. Page 41, 42, the RS, RM, RH, RL definitions. Those are well-defined, right?
Yeah, they are well-defined and they, they correlate to the land use map. And it's really just the modern way of classifying uses based on, you know, the land uses and putting the activities into categories. More of a modern-day way of putting a zoning code together.
Right, I mean, I understand it, so.
Okay.
Commissioners, other points on housekeeping issues?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Relates to like item 33 or row 33. I don't know if all of this language is state language or if we have added some things into a, of requirements around SB9 urban lot splits. Is that all state language, like pretty standard? So the, there's a couple of things in here about like, who, if there's a lot split, the one, whoever owns the lot has to dwell in one of the parcels for three years. So that's state language. Okay, and then for clarity around 1707-30 in the development standards, I guess I was just kind of, some of the language was confusing around the number of ADUs, but I'm guessing that's all, that language is all state language as well.
Right, yeah, yeah. I mean, you can, under SB9, if you meet the, the state requirements, you could, you know, have two units. But if one of them is an ADU, then the unit and the ADU and the JADU, actually, I'm not even sure about the, I think the JADU is not allowed, so.
That's what I was confused about.
Yeah, you're really just, you know, it just includes that ADU, yeah.
Yeah, that's the language I didn't understand. And then elsewhere, there was, I think, state language that used inclusive of. And we elsewhere had defined including and.
I mean, it's just.
Term inclusive of.
Right, it's just as, as a preposition. I mean, just, you know, to indicate that that is included in part of what is allowed.
Yeah, there was just, it was like inclusive, I forget where it was, but inclusive of all ADUs. Anyways, it's state language, so I guess we can't do anything about it.
Can't do anything about it.
Yeah, and so.
Any of the density bonus, any of the ADU stuff?
Yeah.
Joe?
No, nothing.
Asia, did I, did I didn't, did you have anything else?
I think that's everything. The shoreline protective devices, that's state language as well.
Yeah.
Coast commission policy language, yeah.
So commissioners, if we're done with housekeeping, I'd like to run around the table and have you guys opine and suggest where we are and if you have any thoughts for the next meeting. Because the ambition would be to get this done in the next meeting. And we have other agenda items on that meeting, too. So we don't want to spend all night on this and I think we're very close.
I have no further comments other than listening to what they're going to bring back and discussing. That I have no.
Okay, Mike?
And the, the only thing I did not get to in this packet was this spreadsheet. That's all I need to do to make myself feel good, okay?
Yeah, well, the spreadsheet was a, and thank you, Cindy, for the spreadsheet.
Betty, but that's what I really wanted to do, is get, get everything crunched. Just didn't have the time today.
Yeah.
I think it's worth saying that Cindy and Scott did a great job. I found this really easy to review and the spreadsheet helped and it was really clear. So.
Yep.
This, to me, was much easier than objective design guidelines.
Yeah, very clear, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we'd never need another consultant. Asia, any final words?
No.
Joe?
No, I think we can handle the really two important things that came out of it, the, the zero setback and the 37-feet maximum easily. And the definitions, they're not as pressing and whatever we get is, you know, we can work with.
Yeah, and I would take another minute to try to bring Asia along because I think the, the height issue is kind of fundamental to what we're trying to do on the mission. And if, you don't have to decide tonight. But it would be maybe sort of understanding the advantages, that I actually think we'll get more housing this way.
Yeah.
Not just, not just.
More affordable housing, I'll put that, more housing we don't need. More affordable housing we do need.
Okay, yeah, well said.
Where I have to disagree. But yeah, I'm definitely, I know it'll be helpful. I'm more, you know, it's the process, the time it takes and the continual putting off.
Well, we are the planning commission.
And just to add, Commissioner Chair Oshin, just to add that, our downtown needs help, okay? Let's say that. Most cities that do redevelopment discuss their downtown, especially in today's environment, will require additional affordable housing. You're not going to be able to get away with it. So please, the laws are just rolling, that's, I keep on saying that, that they're not, it's not going to be our decision, it's going to be what the legislature says we must do. And we're getting real close to having to do more than what we're doing now, that's for sure. But that needs to be considered as part of your discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. As Commissioner Myers said. Yeah, he said, you guys do it.
So I'm ready to leave this issue for now. And Scott, Cindy, thank you. We've agendized this for the next meeting.
And if I could have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue.
Second.
All in favor, do we have to take a vote? Aye?
Aye.
5-0.
Thank you.
What else do we have left? Moving on to new business, do we have any? Oh, we do. We're going to agendize the, the tree.
The tree policy.
Process.
For trees in the public right-of-way.
And who can do that, Scott? Can you do that?
I can give you the, I can give you the policy beyond that. You know, like if there's anything you want to do with it, then that would have to be some request you make to the city council, but yeah.
Well, I mean, we can go from there, but I'm just saying who's going to kind of tell us.
I'll give you, I'll give you the policy language. I can do a, you know, you know, a two-pager on it for you.
So you can include that in the staff report?
Yeah.
Sweet, thank you. Sorry to give you additional work, but it's a good thing.
Mr. Chair, could I speak to that to give you a little background of why I was asking that the?
You know, Terry, like, there's no public comment right now. Do you mind? Can you hold it for the next meeting?
Anytime you want to take public comment, you can ask for it, thank you.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get done.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to re-motion the continuance.
Oh, why?
Because we need to continue it to a date certain and that would be.
October 3rd, October 3rd.
That's what I was marking, I was, that was my big date.
So we've got a motion by Mike.
Yeah, October.
To a date certain.
October 3rd.
Do we have a second? We do?
Commissioner Myers.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
And where are we at?
Unfinished business?
Okay, yeah, the one thing I did discuss with Sean Green, at least while he was here tonight, was the fact that we finally have a project with public benefits, community benefits that came up. But it's something we've been talking about getting back to, right? Chair, Commissioner Groff, I mean, we're just wondering, Scott, when would be a good time to revisit as these projects start developing and moving along?
Yeah, I mean, you know, actually, we're, you know, kind of changing the process a little bit about what you do. And I've been sitting down with the chair of the planning commission, looking at the nature of the items that are on the agendas so we don't load you up too much because we're trying to get you out of here at 9:30 this evening. So it's kind of dependent on when they fit on the agenda based on that, right? So don't want to give you a bunch of items that you can't get to.
It's good enough for me, I just, I said I'd ask, I'd ask.
It is at the top of the, the future agenda item list.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I like the fact that we had a project that specified public benefit.
One of the issues I'd like to add on to that is, and Scott, I don't know, commissioners, we have an opinion on this. Is it really up to us to negotiate community benefits in a planning commission hearing?
Well, you saw that the, the, the public benefits for that, for the project that was on, at least earlier today, came with public benefits.
Right.
With it. You wanted more or somebody didn't know thanks, so.
So I'm just wondering how that process could be more formalized? I don't, I don't have a horse, I'm just asking.
Just for clarification, that's why we're there. We were going to present our, our recommendation to the planning commission as to what that process could look like.
Yeah.
Right, Joe, I mean, and Sean, we were going to present a, something that we could use moving forward for community, public benefits.
That would happen under that agendized.
Yes, yes, we're going to give you what D3 is going to give, you know, downtown design district, we're going to do the same thing.
Makes sense. Other unfinished business?
I have something, I'm not quite certain how, whether it's appropriate to discuss or not. And I'll let someone yell at me if I, if it's inappropriate.
Start the art council, isn't it?
No. The waterfront master plan at the north end of the waterfront does not incorporate the city's sewer treatment plant site, which is essentially a site which has no purpose anymore except for a lift station and perhaps an RO facility. And I just wonder if this commission or, I'm not certain how to put that to council, but I think it's council's decision to ascertain whether or not the sewer treatment plant should be added to any master planning effort for the north end of the waterfront.
Do you have any background on that, Scott?
Plenty of background. We had it agendized at the last city council meeting in association with the grant authorization request that we made to, for, to go get a grant for $500,000 to the waterfront master plan. One of the things I also wanted the council to weigh in on is, do we want to expand the boundaries to do just what Commissioner Meyer asked? That item got continued because we had a very long agenda last time and so it'll be going to the regular council meeting on, on the 26th, so next week. And that'll be going forward. And that is one of the requests that I make to include that into the, the scope of the grant that we'd be requesting from the coastal commission. So, yeah, so we're doing that.
The reason I bring it up is just because when you look at the, the plot plan that underlies that property, there's an enormous number of lots under there and there should be a public discussion about how.
Is there any suggestion how we could further that consideration?
We have one of your council members sitting here. So I think they've heard what you're talking about. And again, it's at the next city council meeting, so. Oh, so what we were talking about is you have an item on your next council agenda that was actually on the last council agenda.
We were trying to see if there's anything the planning commission can do to bring more clarity or certainty to this.
Around the sewer treatment plant being added to the, to the waterfront master plan.
Oh.
Update effort.
Update, yeah, sorry.
How do I work this? Is it just on? Oh, okay. Yeah, that's funny because we were, we had talked about doing that, so.
And that is on your, is on council's agenda for the next meeting, it was on the last one. And that is one of the requests I make of council to talk about that and to provide that direction. So since you have Councilmember Landrum here, she can carry a little bit of the water on that at council meeting next week.
Well, I was already going to do that, but, and you know that that's a, we also own that property with Cayucus, too, so that's a consideration for sure. But, I mean, how, are you asking how planning commission could help with that?
Well, maybe not at this time, maybe it's a future effort, but yes.
I think they're thinking that it's a, it's a good idea to add it to the, to expand the waterfront master plan footprint as I was, as I'm requesting of council. And so they're supporting that, or at least.
We're basically just.
What happened is I found a plot plan, so the old subdivisions underneath the sewer treatment plant, of which it's a monster. And I just wanted to make sure that whatever the city decided to do there should probably go through an effort with the community. Such, in, in concert with any other master planning effort down there, it would seem to make sense to look at it comprehensively rather than individually and separately.
Well, I, yeah, this, this all came about because I had asked for a joint meeting with, with planning commission and the harbor advisory board. And this is how we were going to start tackling it is by, yeah, because exactly what you're saying, yeah.
Thank you.
Just one brief thing.
Sure, Joe?
I was, I was just remembering the words of Bill Martoni earlier in the day about those leases that are coming up for redevelopment at the south in the Embarcadero. And I'm not sure which jurisdiction gets involved with that, but it seems that there's a mandate on the part of the harbor department to maximize the value of those leases. And I think there should be some discussions about other values beyond just maximization sometimes as in preserving, you know, some of this little. Yeah, yeah, and I don't know the venue or when, but I'd like to see some.
Let's, let's work on that because I do, I, I agree with you, too. Commissioners, future agenda items, next week we get to meet with Zara and all her, her buddies. The first time we've done this, this group, Joe, you've done it before, a joint meeting? And it's interesting, we're not an advisory group, we're a commission, so it's a little bit different, but I'm looking forward to it. And thank you for, you know, doing it and Carla, thanks to Carla, our mayor. But that's next week.
At 3 o'clock on Tuesday, the 26th. If I can get my plug in.
And that's 3 to 5, Scott, and then we'll, we'll be getting an agenda soon, I hope, or.
Yes, we'll be getting the agenda when it's released for the, for the, you know, along with the council meeting. I've, was diligently today finalizing the staff report for it. On my end of it, there's, we have three items. We have battery project updates, goals update, and what was the other item?
Downtown design.
Downtown design district update, so those three things. There's a goal update, battery project, downtown design district.
So Carla's basically, basically going to run the meeting. Joe and I will weigh in on the downtown design district.
And there'll be also be some, and there'll also be a presentation by the city harbor director, Ted Shafon, on the status of, off for a wind, so you'll also get that.
And so dress nice. Take a shower.
Nice.
Okay, director.
I don't have anything else, but mine was going to give the plug for the joint meeting and I gave the time, so I guess we're good.
Oh, okay, so I think we're, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? And thank, thank everybody who stayed with us. We still have quite a few people on the, on the video, on the Zoom call. Thanks, everybody.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It was a good meeting, thank you all.